Okay.
I need the cue when you're done.
We're, I think we're getting ready to rumble. You ready there Alex? Okay. I'd like to call the order of the Avalon City Council meeting of December 17th, which will also include a meeting of the City Council acting as the Oversight Board of the Successor Agency to the ACIA and the Housing Authority. So please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we could please have a moment of silence for Dennis Meyer who passed away on December 5th. He was a Descanso Avenue resident. So Denise, are you doing the roll call?
Yes, I think Gabby got held up over town.
Oh, no problem.
Councilmember Hayes?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Protem McGugan-Cassidy?
Here.
And Mayor Marshall? This evening, we have a presentation from Margarita at the United States Postal Service. You're up, Margarita. Pull down your mic there.
Oh, sure. There you go. Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Annie Marshall. My name's Margarita Jackson. I'm the Postmaster of the Avalon Post Office. I was asked to give a brief presentation today on the Postal Service and the addressing of packages. So, I don't know if any of you are familiar, but Avalon is unique. Avalon is not only unique, but there's several other cities like us throughout the United States. We have cities in Big Bear, Mount Baldy, Sunset Beach, Surfside, parts of Glendora, and parts of San Diego that are exactly like the city of Avalon. And when I reference the city of Avalon, I mean, we do not have letter carriers who will be delivering mail to your house. So we've all experienced situations where we're ordering things online. The presentation that I actually just populated is something that you guys are all familiar with because we've been handing out this letter since October, at least once a month into your PO box. And basically, what we're trying to educate the customers, and I'm doing this religiously to get it into your PO box, so everyone in your household will become familiar with it and take it to heart when they're ordering things online. So first, we have over 2,000 PO boxes in the city of Avalon. And not only that, we have about, oh, I don't know, this one's debatable. The last census recorded us at 4,500 people, but some people probably guesstimate up to 6,000 people. I don't know what the true number is, but that's quite a bit of residents living here in Avalon. So with that, we have 2,000 PO boxes where we have multiple families ordering packages for Christmas. So the reason they wanted me to talk is because Christmas is the biggest time of the season where we're ordering things. But for the city of Avalon, we order year-round. How many of us want to go over town and go to shopping malls? Me personally, not at all. So I am an online shopper. I've learned a couple of tricks along the years on how to get the PO box onto your packages. So we've got, on the display up there, we have something for letter mail. Obviously, getting your PO box on letter mail is very easy. There's really not many organizations that refuse it. Now, packages is a whole different ballgame. Packages is something that we encounter as a big problem because we have vendors like UPS, UPS Sureposts, FedEx, FedEx Smartposts, DHL, and Ontrack. So with those five to six different vendors or courier services, we don't know how our packages are going to get to us. Online, it may say they're shipping UPS. Well, lo and behold, UPS and the Postal Service have partnered together and we created something called Surepost. So UPS will deliver the packages partway to one of our main processing facilities, and then they hand it over to the Postal Service. So when you get a package, you're going to see two different barcodes, one for UPS, one for the Postal Service. That's why many people don't necessarily know how they're getting their packages and who handles it. It's because a lot of us handle it. Everyone from those vendors to the Postal Service. So when I highlighted the portion for packages only, these are some workarounds or some tricks on how to get that box number, and this is where I'm saying just a box number, onto that package that you're ordering. We've got vendors like Walmart, Target, Amazon, Macy's, and Nordstrom's that all accept PO boxes, but occasionally, we're going to order something on Amazon and eBay where they're going to kick out our address and say, guess what? We don't ship to a PO box. I don't know why vendors say that, especially knowing that there's multiple cities that do not have street delivery. So when they do, or when you do encounter that reject, you can try what I refer to as a hybrid method or an alternative method on getting your address. If you live at 123 Sumner, try 123 Sumner BX and then your box number or the pound sign. This will help the staff or the girls at the Postal Service look at that and go, okay, they've got the BX or the pound somewhere in that address. Some customers, I've even seen them throw it in their last name. Whatever or however you can get just that PO box number on there would help tremendously. And I say that because there's so many family members who have the multiple same last names. We think it's this Marshall on this street, but it's actually this Marshall on this street, or this McGugan on this street. No, it's this one at this household. So it'll help us get the package to the right box. We also have, I know currently, the address management team for the Postal Service, this is in Los Angeles, they received a list from the city of Avalon. So currently, what we're trying to do is get, well, and that list of addresses consists of over 2,000 physical lots here in Avalon. So what we're working on right now, and I just received an update today, we're working on getting all of those addresses into the database. So when we're ordering things online, it won't say an invalid address. It'll actually populate as a valid address. So that will help us with other vendors, you know, Amazon, eBay, all of the other providers online. So it won't reject it, but here's where I have to backtrack to, we will never know how a vendor's going to ship to us. We've got large companies who use, all of us, who use FedEx, UPS, the Postal Service. And the reason they use all of us is because they don't know which one's cost-effective based on what you're ordering. If you're ordering a bed, well, then UPS Ground might be the better rate. If you're ordering a pillow, going through the Postal Service is much lighter and a much more cost-effective rate, so they're going to ship through the Postal Service. So because vendors ship with all of the carrier providers, UPS, FedEx, and the Postal Service, it would be in all of our best interest to try to get that box number on there in any which way. This will not only help Catalina Flying Boats, because if it is something that you're used to getting at your household, you might get it at your house if it's got the street address. But if it has pound or BX on there, and that vendor decides, oh, they're going to ship with the Postal Service, then guess what? You're still going to get it, and we're going to be able to know which PO box it's going to go to. Is it going to your personal box, your business box, or your girlfriend's box? So that's why it would help to have that pound or BX on all of your packages, just to make sure you guys get everything that you need. So I did list my name and email up there. If you guys have any questions or concerns, feel free to reach out. I know I will be giving this letter probably continuously for the next couple of months just to make sure we reach everyone in your household. Any questions?
I had a quick question, and thank you so much for coming in and presenting to the community. There are a number of packages being sent back, and I believe it's Surepost. Is that correct? Is Surepost the one that gets sent?
No. I think you might be thinking of Ontrack.
Ontrack, okay.
Ontrack, and this is a company that is new to delivery. They're fairly two, maybe three years old. Ontrack is not UPS, FedEx, or one of the hybrids, the UPS Smartposts, or FedEx Surepost, nor are they the Postal Service. Ontrack is a whole different delivery company that possibly still delivers over town, I'm not sure, because I don't live there. But what I was told was two, a year ago, they contracted with Catalina Flying Boats, that Catalina Flying Boats was flying those packages out here and delivering them to the households. When they stopped paying their bills, or the freight of that transportation and delivery, that's when service to the island was halted. I couldn't tell you anything more about that. You'd have to talk to Catalina Flying Boats, but anything Ontrack, and Ontrack was actually a part of Amazon, so you set reoccurring subscriptions. So again, I couldn't really speak to the company itself, I just know that's the reason they're no longer being provided here. What we were told is just have customers cancel that subscription and reorder the item, and it'll provide them with a different vendor. And again, when we're ordering from Amazon, because they use all third-party vendors, we don't know who's shipping or how they're shipping.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
What about Zip Plus Four for boxes?
The Zip Plus Four. I didn't mention the Zip Plus Four specifically because it's a little antiquated. It is the archaic way of shipping things to the Postal Service. Back in the days, the Zip Plus Four meant something. Now, if you were to mail a letter to New York, 90010, it's going to go to New York. You don't need a plus four. So that being said, if I'm ordering something from Amazon or from Macy's, and they don't allow me to do that plus four, it's not going to print out on the label. So you can use it. I encourage you to use it, if it's allowed. But here's where, if you think that's going to be the default method, and they're going to, you've got somebody who's entering orders online, who's entering 90704, 1098, but what if that label that's being printed out in a warehouse, three doors down, what if it doesn't print out then? It takes it online, but it doesn't print on the label. We've actually seen that happen. So I just don't recommend it as the top choice. Many people have talked about it in the past, and I'm like, sure, on letters, absolutely, there's room, and I've no doubt they do type it out on letters, but on packages, we will never know. So why take that chance of not getting those Macy's packages or Amazon packages? Try that pound or BX method, and it would work.
Other questions? Anybody have a question? Well, thank you, Margarita. That was great.
Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas.
Very timely. And City Manager, announcements and written communications?
I have several of both. So my announces this evening, first, as the City Clerk's office, I was excited to say that we have nine qualified candidates. And on last Thursday, December 12th, the Secretary of State did a random alphabet drawing, and so this is how the names have to appear on the ballot. For mayor, we have Stephen Hayes, Annie Marshall. For the City Council, the four-year term, Lisa Lavelle, Ole Olson, Yessenia Sara de La Rosa, Joe Sampson, and Yolanda Yoli Montano. For the City Council, two-year term, it is Carl Johnson and Michael Ponse, and they have all been notified. We have sent the statements, the ballot designation, the measures, and we had one rebuttal to the measure, one of our advisory measures, and they've all been submitted to the county. The county has assigned a letter to our measures, so the sales tax measure is going to be officially Measure SS. The advisory measure regarding the recreational adult-use cannabis delivery sales is Measure E. And the advisory measure regarding the storefront cannabis sales is Measure F. And, oh, and the partial analysis, I don't know if I said that, was all sent to the county also. Then I did receive a couple written communications. The first one would be during the December 3rd City Council meeting, we acknowledged the written communication from the group regarding the Casino Theater and the closure of it. And at that time, since it wasn't slated on that agenda, the City Council, I should say, two of the three that were present that evening, the decision was just made to have this discussion at a later date to table it. And since then, I've received two more written communications on it. The first one was yesterday and another one today. And I have a draft correspondence ready to go to them, but I was waiting any further direction. And then I have five written communications regarding item number 13, which is our cruise ship discussion this evening, three of which have been asked to be read into the record. And I think that's all I have.
That's a lot. Thank you very much. Okay. Department head reports?
Good evening. Bob Greenlaw, Director of Public Works, got a few items for you. The Mole Phase 1, we're pouring the beams, first couple beams this week, so we're making good progress underneath. The weather is hampering a little bit, but it's still, we're making good progress. Beverly Beach Road Lift Station, making progress on the site work with Jordal Construction. We expect the construction contract to be finished in two to three weeks, depending on the weather. That did hamper us a little bit within the last few rains because we are doing site work. Catherine Booster Station, that's a saltwater line that we've had problems with keeping the prime on there that supplies all the saltwater to the two reservoirs. And we're, during the low tides here, we're actually excavating that pipe with our own crews so we can get at and make that repair. We have put additional riprap this last week on South Beach. We saw some more erosion on the other side of the stairway, so to protect for that, our own crews went out there with our new dump truck and placed more riprap. So that helps us during, especially like today, it was, that helped us so that erosion wouldn't happen underneath the footing of that seawall. Coastal Commission will be visiting in January to the city to review the city's projects. So that's good news, so that we can get an understanding and they can actually see it instead of just receive it, paper copy, and try to process it. So we'll be spending a full day with them. And then Parking Survey Number Three is available on our home webpage here at citiavaleon.com/parking. So that one takes input from, the changes we made to the 200 block of Descanso and Catalina and 300 block of Beacon, so we encourage everybody to go in there and answer what is about 10 or 12 questions. And then we'll report that back. And we also completed the valve replacement that's on that saltwater transmission main up to Mount Ada, and this last week with our crews and Montrose crews to get that done with our new excavator. We were able to get that work done with just city staff and Montrose. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes.
The rails on Sumner and Catalina, I know they, seems like they've been put on hold waiting for Avalon Beautiful to maybe generate some money to make some prettier rails. Do we have any progress reported on that?
We do have a proposal from one, from somebody to supply some funding for that. So we're trying to see if that will work for us. If not, we would just go straight in to put in some cable rails.
Have we timelined that a little bit, do you think? How long are we willing to wait?
It needs to be done soon.
Yeah.
Okay? We know that. We're behind on that one. And then we're also going to be put out to bid here soon, the other ADA ramps for the next round of CDBG funding, and that would be on Third Street. So at Catalina and Clarissa there is where we intend to put the next ramps. Okay?
Any questions, Council or community? We good? Okay, thank you.
Matt Baker, Finance Director. Just a quick update. Last week, we mailed out approximately 1,300 business licenses. There are a few stragglers we sent out on Monday, but if you don't receive a business license sometime in the next week, please reach out to City Hall and we will get you an invoice printed. Just as a reminder, the due date is January 15th for those. The last meeting, I was also asked regarding development fees at Hamilton for a fire truck. The city's received approximately $30,000 in its vehicle maintenance fund, and once that development project's completed, it will receive approximately $170,000. But again, as of this year, $30,000's been received for that.
Okay, thank you. Other questions at Finance? Thank you, Matt. Anybody else? Any department heads? The department heads that aren't coming up, do we have questions, like for Dan or Amanda or Harbor? We're good? Okay. City Manager report?
I think I already gave it.
Okay. City Attorney?
Nothing.
Okay. Councilmember report? You know how much that little nothing costs us? Is that an only comment?
Channeling only.
Wow. I'm sorry.
Happy birthday.
I know, yeah, yeah. Okay, Councilmember report?
I have one thing tonight. So I'd like to report on the Casino Theater. Over the last three weeks, I have been involved with the organization that started the petition as well as the Island Company. We've had hours of communication between the boat back and forth, and I would say it's been extremely positive. I would like to say through very mutual collaboration and a lot of research, I've reached out to organizations off the island, advocacy groups and different organizations, as well as taking the casino tour this last Sunday with my wife. We bought a ticket and did behind-the-scenes. I have to say, it was quite, I know a lot about it, I've been through there many times, but it was really interesting to go back and see it again. So as of this afternoon, I would like to announce though that the Island Company has willingness to work with the city of Avalon to keep the theater open on a one-month, one-time-a-month basis to run a movie. I will be talking to the City Manager in the next couple of days to work on those details, if the Council will agree, which I think they will, based on. So I would just, you know, like to really say that through working together, I know I've said this many times, and mutual respect, that things can get done. Also, that will, there's a lot of other things in the works. There is a proposal that has been submitted that is a very viable proposal for a multi-use facility that will be ongoing, as well as a couple of other proposals that they're waiting for. So I remain very optimistic that there can be a solution for the community, but at least at this time, there is the willingness to work with us, that we have a once-a-month movie at a low-cost rate potentially for everybody to enjoy.
Great. That's good news. Thank you. Congratulations. It's awesome.
I'll go next.
Okay.
Last Thursday, I attended the League of California Cities Board Meeting and Holiday Celebration in Los Angeles, and it was hosted by none other than Scott Campbell. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. We appreciate that. That's it.
I attended the Gateway Cities Board Meeting and Officers Meeting, and I also, I'm sure, Mayor Marshall, you're going to wrap this up as well, but just wanted to say a heartfelt "Happy Holidays" to all our city staff, and thank you so much for everybody's hard work.
It was a great party.
It was a great party.
Okay. Oh my goodness. All righty, just a question. Has there been any movement forward? I think I'm talking to Stephen Cindy, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask you before, I'm not trying to put you on the spot. On that kind of event thing, looking at special events and things to bring revenue into the city, has there been any movement in the last couple of months?
I am pleased to report that Ray McEwen took the lead on organizing a group of about 20 individuals from various aspects of the community. And there have been two meetings. I was not able to make the second meeting, but I was able to make the first meeting where we had well over 100 ideas that we put out for possible events. We did not focus on summer events, but we did not exclude any summer opportunities. But there was significant input from the community, and I believe the second meeting was sort of channeling all of those ideas into a more succinct manner, and then looking at which ones we could effectively go after and which ones would really work for Avalon. So there is movement and tremendous group.
Awesome. Fantastic. That's great news. Thank you. Yeah. At the last council meeting, I asked you about Vons and the recycling program, and someone forwarded me some information today. I'm just going to read it because it's easier. Under the Beverage Container and Litter Reduction Act, supermarkets create convenience zones that have a half-mile radius. When new supermarkets are added, we activate them as convenience zones twice per year on January 1st and July 1st. Because the new Vons location is opening after July 1, it will be activated as a new convenience zone on July 1, 2019. When the new Vons is, oh, it's, okay, when the new Vons is activated on July 1, it is required by statute that the zones go through an exemption review. At that time, notices of public comment will be mailed out to interested parties, and there was an interested party that got this. A public comment period with a minimum of 30 days is required. After the public comment is concluded, an exemption decision will be made. During the public comment period, testimony in favor or opposing exemption for the new Vons can be submitted via this email, and I know you're not going to be ready to write it, but it's, and we'll hopefully put it on our website, it's czexemptions@calrecycle.ca.gov. This testimony can be submitted by any interested party. An exemption is either granted or denied after the public comment periods. If at that time exemption is denied, the zone would become unserved. As an unserved zone, the Vons and all beverage dealers within the convenience zone would be required by statute to do one of two options: redeem CRV containers in the store for consumers all hours they are open, or pay a daily fee of $100 per day in lieu of redeeming CRV containers in the store until a recycling center is established. I'm very much in support of having a redemption center because I don't believe that $100 a day doesn't solve our dilemma. It doesn't take care of the recycles, it doesn't reimburse people for what they've been paying for all of these years. The public comment period started on December 6th, and the last day for public comments is January 6th. Please submit your comments supporting or opposing exemption to, again, czexemptions@calrecycle.gov by January 6th. But I would like to take a stand that we, as a council, write a letter that I personally oppose them paying $100 a day, and I would like to see them doing some kind of redemption. And I think if the city in toto decided that, that was a good way to go. I think our letter might hold some weight. So I don't know what you all think. I'd like your input.
I wanted to tell the mayor though before, because you had asked that question to the Planning Director at the last council meeting. City staff is meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 or 8:30, I believe, to come up with our game plan and with a letter that would be from the council, because I already felt that there was a direction that we wanted to voice our concerns with not giving them that.
But in voicing the concerns, it is for redemption, not for paying the $100 fine every day?
Correct. For them not to just get away with paying the $100.
Okay, great. Okay. If you wouldn't mind-
Because that was voiced way back when with the approval process.
Right, okay. Well, if we could, and there's also an address here, but if we could put that on the-
I can put that on the website, absolutely.
On the website, and hopefully you all will participate. So thank you. And that's all I had. Oral communication. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council at this time. No action will be taken on non-agenda items. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. And again, please keep in mind that somebody will be tracking the speaker's time. The first warning will be given when 36 seconds remain, the second warning when nine seconds remain before this time is up.
Except we don't have a timer. It's going to be the timer.
It's going to be three minutes.
Okay. Just three minutes and no warnings, okay? Thank you.
You can test it on me.
Okay.
Hello, Paul Burchall, Avalon Library. Sorry I missed you all at the last meeting. I've been sick. I'm better now. I'm a little behind in terms of projects and work at the library, which is still looking fabulous, by the way. We are getting, thanks to Supervisor Hahn, a huge new collection of books. Basically, it's an opening day collection, but they didn't have it in time for opening day, so they're giving it to us in drips and drabs. I have doubled our nonfiction, which is kind of cool, and I just got three boxes of juvie fiction, things like Willy Wonka, that sort of book. Not Willy Wonka, but books like that. So we've got lots and lots of books coming. I just got 100 DVDs. So we're going to have a lot more fresh stuff for the people of Avalon to come and see when they come to our library. Things are slowing down for the month of December. I'm still doing Smarty Pants Storytime every Saturday at 11 o'clock. Lovely, lovely storytime for everybody. Coming up on Wednesday, the 18th, I'm going to have a decorate-your-own-Christmas-tree, little wooden trees that I bought, and people are going to put them with little buttons and things. On Thursday, I'm hosting a Bark George Read-Along Party. I don't quite know what's going to happen with that, but I've got these ceramic dogs, and people can paint them, and I'm going to read a book, so it'll be kind of fun. And on the 27th and on the 28th, I've got a lot of New Year's masks that we can make. So all sorts of little fun stuff. Our friends of the library are having their registration time now, so come and join us as a friend of the library. I believe we're also continuing our ukulele program. That's Mondays at 4:00 PM. It's pretty fabulous. I come there and I plunk the strings. We're going to be participating in the holiday concert on Monday. Got some stuff coming up in January. I'm going to have Emmy Lamb come out and teach us a little bit of Chinese calligraphy, and hopefully a dancer's going to do Spanish dancing. I'm also, the friends will be interested in this, I'm going to invest in a professional ukulele teacher for one class, and see if a professional teacher, if the- And see if a professional teacher, if our friends come and participate in that, and if that's the case, I'll find a way to get them back for some other times. Got some stuff a little farther ahead, I'm going to just stop there, but we're going to have a fabulous, fabulous winter. Come to the library, it's amazing.
It is, thank you so much, Paul.
Paul, I just have a question for you. I, since before the construction project happened on the new library, I had asked and asked LA County about cameras and lights. And now that it's winter, I'm curious to know where they are in the process of adding outdoor lighting for that little park area on the side of the building?
I do not have an answer for you, I'm sorry to say. I will put it to my boss when I get to the office. It's a perfectly valid question.
Okay.
We get dark early, that, the chessboard out there, it's pretty sad to play chess in the dark.
Yeah, the front part is a little more lit, because that's also the entrance to the Sheriff's Department, but the side of the building, next to the parking, is a bit sketch.
I have noticed that, sketchy is the word. I'll pass the information along.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate the question, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else?
Well, I'm happy to announce that Catalina Connect is finally open.
Congratulations.
After all this time, Catalina Connect is open. If anyone is interested, they could visit our website at catalinacconnect.com, and during business hours, they can call and we'll answer any of their questions, because I know people have a lot of questions right now.
Great.
So, but it's official.
Took a while, but congratulations, okay. Anyone else? No, okay.
Consent calendar?
We have 10 items on the consent calendar, but I am asking to remove items 8, 9, and 10, just because we have somebody here to do a presentation on those items. Or at least 8 and 9, and they're all kind of tied together. And those consent calendar items are: City Council acting as the Housing Authority, the City Council acting as a successor agency, and then the last one, acting as the successor agency to the ACIA and the Housing Authority. So with your permission, may I pull those?
Of course.
Okay. So item number one is the minutes from the December 3, 2019 regular meeting of the City Council. Number two is warrants, just for a total disbursement of $980,015.62, and that's from the time period of November 23 through December 6, 2019. Number three is to adopt an ordinance to amend Article 10, Chapter 2 of the Avalon Municipal Code, anchors, anchoring and mooring, and this ordinance was introduced and all further readings waived at the last City Council meeting on December 3. Number four is the end float and annual floats and warfs maintenance budget adjustment request. And the recommended action is to authorize the reallocation of funding between council-approved capital projects to fund the end float repairs and amend the budget to allocate funding for annual warfs and warfs, floats and warfs maintenance and repairs as outlined below. So four and five are, and six even, are all kind of tied together, and so we try to put them in a sequence in which they should appear for your approval. Number five is the repair and maintenance of the city's pier end float, and that's authorize the harbor master to accept the bid offer of Owl Larson's Boat Shop to repair the city's pier end float for a not-to-exceed amount of $130,000. Number five is to designate Owl Larson Boat Shop as a sole-source vendor, and I just want it noted that this just helps facilitate the process and that we don't have to go out for an RFP, but it doesn't tie us just to Owl Larson, that we can go, reach out to others, okay? And so the recommended action is to authorize the harbor master to designate Owl Larson's Boat Shop as a sole-source vendor, as defined in the Avalon Municipal Code, to contract repair and maintenance on certain city floats. We did go out for an RFP, and we had not received any responses, so we've had to go this route. The number seven is the 2020 waterside permit renewals, and that is authorize the harbor master to renew the attached list of waterside permits for 2020.
Excellent, council?
I'm going to abstain on one because I wasn't here.
I'll make a motion to approve items 1 through 7.
Second.
Second. You have to abstain from one, so, I'll second.
Any comments? Call for the vote.
Uh-oh, uh-oh.
Uh-oh.
Shall we do just a hand thing?
We can do a hand thing, let's make it easy.
Aye.
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 Yeah.
All ayes, okay, thank you.
And one abstention.
Yes, thank you, and one abstention on item number one. Okay, on item number eight, we have Alex Lawrence in the audience. She is from RSG, and she'll be presenting for item number eight and number nine.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor, and council members for having me here. So we do have a few items today. The first is for the Housing Authority, and we'll be presenting the Housing Successor Annual Report, which is an annual report we do each year for the state Housing and Community Development Department. So the staff is recommending today that you receive and file the Housing Successor Annual Report. This is due to HCD by December 31, 2019, yeah, 2019, so we're getting close. So a little bit of background on this report. So back when redevelopment dissolved in 2012, the housing, the RDA was no longer able to retain any tax increment, and all RDA housing assets and liabilities were transferred to the Housing Authority, who acts as the housing successor. And Senate Bill 341 required that all former redevelopment assets, so, sorry, they required that all assets be transferred to and maintained in a low- and moderate-income housing asset fund. And this bill also clarified housing successor requirements, such as income and age limits, and also established annual reporting requirements, which is this Housing Successor Report. So this report, as I said, is due on December 31. It must be accompanied by an independent financial audit of the Housing Asset Fund, and these audited financials and the report must be posted on the city website. The report must also be presented to the former RDA's governing body, which is the Housing Authority. So each report contains the Housing Asset Fund financial activities, such as the revenue expenditures and fund balance. It also describes other assets and active projects, such as the properties that the housing successor owns and their disposition status, the inventory of the Affordable Housing Covenants, loan receivables, et cetera, and also reports on the status of the obligations and proportionality requirements. And these requirements are excess surplus, percentage of senior restricted units, and compliance with income proportionality and spending requirements, which I'll go into a little bit of detail in a few minutes. So as stated in the fiscal year 1819 report, which is the one we will be submitting, the housing successor has approximately a $1.5 million cash balance as of the end of fiscal year 1819. The revenues for that year include the successor agency CRF loan repayment, some rental income from the 206 East Whitley property that the successor agency has, the ground lease from the two Descanso properties, and interest income. There is also a small amount of remaining loan receivables, but, which is the CRF loan, it's about $26,000 left, but that CRF loan is paid off in 1920. So after this loan is paid off in 1920, we don't expect the housing successor to have a lot of income and deposits coming in after that. So the housing successor has five real properties that were transferred from the former redevelopment agency. That's the two parcels under the Beacon Hill Senior Apartments, the land under the two affordable single-family homes on Descanso and 206 East Whitley. All these properties are listed on the Housing Asset Transfer Form, which was approved by the State Department of Finance in 2012. So part of the reporting requirements are that we have to report if the housing successor is compliant with the expenditure limits set forth in SB 341. So the housing successor is able to spend housing asset funds on administrative costs. In 1819, the cap was about $220,000, but you only spent six bucks, so you're definitely within that limit. Also, you're able to spend on the homeless prevention and rapid housing, again, $250,000 cap each year, but spent zero. And you're also able to spend on affordable housing development. The housing successor has not, did not spend anything on affordable housing development, but just for future reference, any spending on that is subject to income level target requirements. And that's that at least 30% of funds must assist extremely low rental households. No more than 20% can assist low-income households, and no funds can assist moderate income. So Avalon is in compliance. It's subject to a five-year compliance period, which ended in 1819, but because nothing was spent, that is not applicable. However, the new five-year compliance period starts in fiscal year 1920, which is what we're in now. So for the next five years, we'll need to be very mindful that any spending needs to be within those income limits. So a few other requirements. So essentially, for senior housing, a maximum of 50% of deed-restricted rental housing units can be assisted by the housing successor, the former RDA, or the city over the last 10 years. Avalon has not assisted any senior rental units in the last 10 years, so this is not applicable, however, we will continue to monitor this. And then also, there are some property disposition or development requirements. This is a 10-year deadline. It started off as any properties that the housing successor listed on that housing asset transfer, those five properties, they would, they would either need to be developed for affordable housing or disposed of, and any funds would need to be put into the Housing Asset Transfer Fund, which would then be used for affordable housing. That five-year period ended, but the Avalon did request a five-year extension, so that new deadline is August 30, 2022. And currently, all properties are already used for affordable housing, so the only property that we need to look at in the future is 206 East Whitley. And I know there's been conversations about that in the past, but we'll just need to ensure that that property is either disposed of or used for affordable housing. So as I said, Avalon is fully compliant as of the end of fiscal year 1819 with SB 341. However, we are predicting that in fiscal year 1920, that may not be the case. So as Avalon may not comply with the excess surplus requirement, so excess surplus is required as an, is defined as an unencumbered amount that exceeds the greater of $1 million or the sum of deposits in the previous four fiscal years. And based on projections of the current fund balance and the deposits that will be coming in, there is projected to be an excess surplus of about $435,000. So that excess surplus must be expended or encumbered within three fiscal years, or by the end of that, it will need to be transferred to HCD. So staff and RSG will work with city council to determine how these funds can best be spent. And with that, do you have any questions?
Questions? No, I think we're good there.
Awesome.
So...
Do we-
Adopt the resolution? Or do we want to go into the second one?
You can go ahead and adopt the resolution.
Okay. Am I to me?
Number eight.
Just number eight, is that what we're doing? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, first and second.
Wait, we gotta do it.
Oh, that's right.
Aye.
Aye.
How can it be secret?
Well, sorry. It's not secret when it shows up on the line.
Screen, yeah.
Okay, all ayes. And item number nine?
Awesome.
That would be you too.
Okay, so RSG is also a consultant for the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency. So today, we are here to present the recognized obligation payment schedule for fiscal year 2021, which I will, from here on out, refer to as ROPS, because it's just a little bit easier, and also the administrative budget for fiscal year 2021. So that's what staff is recommending, that you all adopt a resolution of, to approve the ROPS 2021 and the administrative budget. So a little bit of background information here. The ROPS 2021 will cover the period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. There is a penalty of $10,000 to the city, not the successor agency, if it is turned in late, and it must be turned into DOF by February 1, 2020. DOF then has 45 days to make their determination, and RPPTF distributions for this year, or for fiscal year 2021, will be distributed in June 1, 2020 and January 3. And RSG will work with staff, DOF typically asks a lot of questions about this whenever we submit a ROPS, so RSG will work with staff to make sure we get DOF everything they need. So part of the ROPS form is that we must report on the prior period adjustment for three years prior. So a prior period adjustment essentially reports on how much of the distributed RPPTF was actually spent on the approved enforceable obligation for three years prior, which is fiscal year 1718. And this amount, the prior period adjustment in 1718, will be taken out of that 2021 distribution. So the Avalon PPA for fiscal year 1718 was submitted on time and showed about $4,170 of unspent RPPTF from that ROPS period. That was from fiscal agent fees, the pebbly beach road construction, and continuing bond disclosure. So that $4,100 will be taken out of the 2021 distribution automatically, because it was unspent. So on the ROPS 2021, there are a few enforceable obligations, and they are all the same that you have seen in past years, there is nothing new. We are requesting $2.3 million approximately for 2021. These are for debt service payments, fiscal agent fees, continuing bond disclosure and bond arbitrage, admin costs, and debt service payments for bonds. And those are all, the amounts are all listed up on the screen. So there is very little change from past ROPS. The only changes are the Housing Successor Entity Administrative Allowance, which was $150,000. It was thought that it could be used, DOF denied it a few years past. Avalon did file a lawsuit against DOF, and then DOF dismissed it, so we are no longer requesting that administrative allowance. And also, from past years, the CRF loan repayment will be retired because it will be paid off in fiscal year 1920. So the administrative budget, we're required to detail this for DOF. So this year Avalon, or next year Avalon will be requesting $250,000, which is the maximum amount. In the past, Avalon has asked for what's called permitted administrative expense, admin allowance, which is a pre-existing tax sharing agreement with the county of LA. However, no PAE is being requested for 2021, nor was it last year, because there are new countywide oversight boards looking into all of this. And they're a lot, they have a lot more scrutiny on the admin budgets, and based on the activity that we've seen in the past years, $250,000, we've seen, has been sufficient. So there is a last, an option for a last and final ROPS. A last and final ROPS can be submitted if three conditions are met. It's that if the remaining debt includes admin costs and enforceable obligations with set payment schedules, if obligations have been previously approved by DOF, and if the successor agency has no unresolved litigation. So Avalon is eligible to submit a last and final ROPS. However, when that happens, it can only be amended, the ROPS can only be amended two times, which is a little risky, and also, your admin budget would go down from what we've seen to about $5,000 per enforceable obligation. And usually, bonds are actually condensed- And usually, bonds are actually condensed into what considered one enforceable obligation, so we would predict it would go, your admin allowance would go from about two hundred and fifty thousand to about twelve to fifteen thousand. So it'd be significantly reduced. So after the successor agency approves the ROPS, we will then take it to the countywide oversight board. In the past, there were local oversight boards. Last year, that was changed to be countywide. Avalon is in District Four Consolidated Countywide Oversight Board. That meeting will be on January twenty-eighth, and we will work with staff to make sure all items are submitted to the oversight board on time for that meeting. And with that, do you have any questions? It's a lot of information.
Yeah, it really is.
Came here last year.
Somebody, you have someone in the back that has a question? You put your hand up.
Stretching.
Rudy, come on up to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rudy.
We're hearing a lot of numbers here that go pretty wild, but it sounds to me like most of this is administrative cost, is that correct?
Yes.
And so we're not building any, we're not providing any new housing for all this money?
Uh, for...
And if you step up to the mic, please, sweetheart.
Um, the first, the housing successor report, that's just reporting on status. The successor agency ROPS, that's money coming from the county. Nothing is actually being done. This is more of a reporting, and then the ROPS is requesting funds from the county for approval from the county to receive funds for these obligations that were made when the redevelopment agency was in place. Essentially, we're just winding down that redevelopment agency and requesting the funds to do that. We can't start any new activity with the successor agency. We can only wind down per law.
But we do have to spend, Rudy, because next year is the last year of this. We've got four hundred thousand, because we've got too much cash, that we have to spend that money in three years. Plus, we've also been working on the Whitley property to tidy that up for, for low-income housing. And so the council has been making progress in dealing with the creation of low-income housing.
And that, we could spend that money for the, for the renovation versus the other housing money?
Yes.
Yeah, I was talking about the ROPS part. The housing successor, yes, that money does need to be spent to create affordable housing, yes. Sorry for the...
And at what point does this actually produce affordable housing?
That wouldn't be her, though.
That's a question for us.
Yes.
And has the city been developing a program for the use of that money that will result in additional housing?
And Rudy, you need to talk into the microphone, I'm sorry.
Has the city been, if that's your responsibility, I mean, if that's the council's responsibility, what have we done so far that would really result in additional physical housing, affordable housing?
Two oh six East Whitley.
So, two oh six East Whitley, they are currently, we've got a, we've got a program to rehabilitate those structures, and I think it's going to be five, four or five units that will be added to the housing stock.
Yeah, so, we anticipate coming with bid results on the remodel, the renovation for the four, existing four units here this next month, okay, so in January. And then, also at that time, we have been working with our architect for a site plan, and then put a pro forma together, so we can see that if the additional five units is feasible, we would present that at the same time. So as we talk next month, whether we go with all of it or just a piece of it, okay?
There has not been any big go-forward on any large housing at this point. I mean, we did it about three years ago or so, and we had somebody that was interested, and we were working really well with the island company, but the, the company that was going to be the developer backed out, basically because it was infeasible for them to, to do the construction with the amount of money and to get the, all of that. So it's been, we haven't done anything since.
And what project was that?
That was going to be up on Tremont, the removal of some of the older Tremont homes, Tremont Hall, and putting, the island company was willing to negotiate with that property. But I remember who that agency was, who that was, we were working with.
C and D Cottle, or Cottle and Associates?
Cottle and Associates, and they, they left. They just, it wasn't feasible for them. Doesn't mean it's dead, but we really haven't, you know, I know we're look, still working on water, and I know as the island company is still working on water for their employee housing, so right now, there hasn't been any movement.
Okay. The one thing that seems to be most alarming is the amount of money, I think that if I'm understanding it correctly, the amount of money being spent on administration and, and really not producing much results.
That's the money that the state gives us. The state gives us every year, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We don't have to spend that.
It doesn't matter whether they give it to you or not, how's it being used? I mean, is it being used that really will produce additional housing?
You can only use that money to cover your, your administrative expenses.
And we spent six dollars. So Matt, the finance director's right behind you there, Rudy, he's, he's going to respond. Thank you.
So we, we haven't been using housing money for administrative costs, but for managing the successor agency, so I think part of where the confusion is, there's two separate items. One of them's related to the, the housing authority, and for that, we haven't been charging, we had six dollars in administrative costs related to housing. So we haven't been using housing money to pay for administrative costs. Now for managing the successor agency, which is the, what remained after redevelopment, which is the fund we use to pay our existing debt obligations, that we do receive funds from the county through the ROPS process to reimburse the city for the time we take to manage the bond process, whether that's working with vendors to create the arbitrage reports, or that's working with RSG to prepare reports to the county. So the, the two hundred and fifty thousand administrative allowance we received, that's separate from housing. We haven't been using, other than the six dollars last year, which, we haven't been using housing money to reimburse staff time for administrative costs. The, the administrative allowance that they were speaking to relates to the successor agency, which is the fund we use to pay our debt obligations out of.
Well, I bet that was totally clear, huh, Rudy? You got it?
No.
Okay. We're not spending, we're not spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on administrative costs in the city of Avalon for employee time and that kind of thing. So we're not using it like that at all.
But we're getting it from the state.
But we're getting it from the state. Okay, other comments or questions? Okay, is there...
So the motion of this one would be to adopt a resolution, the successor agency to the Avalon Community Improvement Agency approving the recognized obligation payment schedule twenty twenty-one and successor agency administrative budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Okay, perfect.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second. Call for the hand?
The audience?
Oh, audience, do you have any comments? Okay. I think we have four eyes here.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And number ten is just their renewal. To authorize the city manager and agency director to enter their contract with RSG Incorporated to provide the successor agency and the housing authority consulting services for fiscal year twenty twenty-one in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
So that comes out, can that come out of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
That's exactly what I, that's exactly. Those, those fees, any attorney fees dealing with redevelopment, you don't pay for, the state pays for.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved in second. Comments? Call for the hand?
All eyes.
Item number eleven.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager. I just want to give you a quick update on the development impact fees. This is mostly just a receive and file, and then we do have one small motion that staff will be recommending at the end, but I'll keep the remarks pretty brief. So as you may recall, at the second meeting in September, city council directed staff to review the city's methodology and approach to establishing development impact fees, primarily for the single and multifamily residential fee categories. Council also asked staff to outreach with the business community to get their input on these fees. And even more specifically, council requested an alternative equitable formula be considered in lieu of a per-dwelling fee. So originally, the single and multifamily residential fee categories were on a per-dwelling unit fee, and they, they tasked staff with looking at either a per-bedroom, a square footage, or something else. So since September, city staff had held discussions with the business community at two different meetings of the Catalina Island Chamber of Commerce. We've also met on multiple occasions separately with the Catalina Island Company. As a result of those discussions, a revised blended fee was developed that combines both the single and multifamily rate. The reason for this is based off of the input and also taking a careful consideration in what our housing is here. You know, there is kind of a, a primary density. There's not really a, a different density between the single family and the multifamily like you would see over town in Long Beach or some of these other cities. Our density is fairly consistent, and it, it made sense to kind of combine those. So we will be proposing, we're revising the development impact mitigation fee nexus study and proposing a blended fee rate. That blended fee rate, it comes out to about thirty dollars, thirty dollars and sixty-one cents, to be exact. We also originally proposed to have a cap on the residential fee after three thousand square feet, because proportionally, you know, after three thousand square feet of a living unit, you really don't see the increase in size of family. However, based off of discussions, that cap was scrapped, because it was highlighted that there's still significant inequities, if you were to look at smaller units versus some of the larger units. So what I mean by that is, if we were to propose a cap on a three, on a three thousand square foot residence, people who built, let's say, up to a three thousand square foot residence would be paying the full amount of development impact fees, but if you were to build, we wouldn't have the land for this, but if you were to build a fifteen thousand square foot house, you'd only pay development impact fees on three thousand. And so they felt that that was disproportionate and inequitable, so we struck, we scrapped that. The next step in this process is to revise the nexus study with the new residential fee assumptions. We're also going to be testing those justifications and assumptions and refining the residential rate accordingly, so while in the report is proposed at about thirty dollars, we will be making some fine-tuning adjustments when the public finance analyst can works his magic and is able to defend and justify those fees. And then, we will also be revising the estimated population growth figures. This was based off of some concern that the original population growth figures were a little bit misguided. We took it from some sources that we have, internal documents, but after discussions with the business community, they felt like those were a little bit overly ambitious, so we'll be revising those accordingly, and some of those other fees might get fine-tuned as well. So we will be then republishing that once it gets adjusted, when we would like to see, or we're shooting, to bring this back for council consideration and adoption at the January, I think it's the twenty-first meeting, it's the second meeting, city council meeting in January. So staff's recommending, city council receive and file the update on the development impact mitigation fees, and then consider an agreement with Michael Baker International, who did the original fee, fee study back in, I think we entered the contract back in twenty seventeen, but it's since expired as of twenty eighteen, to make a council requested revisions, and also to have a not-to-exceed amount of one thousand dollars. So we reached out to Michael Baker to make those fine-tuning adjustments, and then to assist with the final presentation. They don't, they don't see that costing anything more than a thousand dollars, so it actually could be quite less. So that's my report, and I'm available for any questions.
I, I think you definitely are covering the things that we mentioned, I appreciate that. Do you have comments, or, okay, is there a, I guess, a motion to receive and file? And authorize the not-to-exceed?
So moved.
Okay. So motion, is there a second?
A second.
Okay, comments? Raise your hand. Thank you.
All eyes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twelve.
Good evening, council. Item number twelve is the first reading of an ordinance for our inclusionary housing ordinance. This is amending Avalon Municipal Code Title Nine, Chapters Eleven and Seventeen. This is a section of the municipal code that pertains to inclusionary housing. Just for the public edification, inclusionary housing is when development is required to provide employee housing. And so the council and the planning commission got together a little over a year ago and talked about various housing issues and, excuse me. And so we've been working on an update to our ordinance, not only to reflect some lessons that we've learned about inclusionary housing, but also to reflect the state statute modifications. I'll highlight the main changes that have occurred, that we're proposing. One of them that was that the city officials expressed that we retain the twenty percent inclusionary requirement, and that will require that the code be reviewed by HCD, if you adopt it in that manner. We've always required a twenty percent inclusionary requirement. State statute is something a little different, but council and the commission expressed their desire to retain a twenty percent. And that twenty percent applies to a residential development, so if someone was building a hundred unit, is there something happening back here? I keep seeing people looking over me this way. There, if you're building a hundred-unit apartment building, twenty percent of them would have to be restricted to affordable rents. So that's where that twenty percent comes in. Then we also talked about different alternatives providing to developers for things that they could do in lieu of building housing on-site, and one of them was whether we wanted to charge an in-lu fee. The planning commission and the council indicated that they did not want to require an in-lu fee, because we don't have housing programs that need funding, where we could be spending in-lu fees, so we opted for other options to where they could meet that housing obligation. And some of those were that they could purchase and rehab existing housing, but it would come with a covenant that would restrict it to affordable, or they could purchase a transient residential unit and take it out of the transient market, and thus lock it in as year-round housing with an affordability covenant. The greatest change, and this is one area where Avalon is once again breaking new horizons, is requiring inclusionary housing for commercial development. This is not something you see in very many cities. Most cities have a housing impact fee, which we have chosen not to do for some of the same reasons. And so, in the past, the city had a code that said if it was new commercial development, you needed to provide employee housing for twen, fifty percent of your peak season employees. We had not ever had to impose that code. The first time we did, we realized we really needed to tweak some of the language and clarify exactly what new commercial development would be subject to inclusionary housing, and that is defined as businesses that seek to commence or expand commercial operations within the city for which employees will be hired or transferred, and a new structure will be built requiring city planning entitlements, or an existing structure will increase its footprint by fifty percent or more for purposes of continued or expanded commercial purposes, or a residential structure or structures will be converted for commercial purposes. And so that's the definition of new, that is the type of new commercial development that could be subject to inclusionary housing. Let's see, what it was. The other thing that changes that we're proposing is currently in our code, all of the implementation guidelines are contained in the municipal code. And Elizabeth Hall and the city attorney, Scott, have recommended that we get those implementation guidelines, the nuts and bolts on how you manage that code, out of the municipal code, and put it into a separate document, a guidelines document, that would be approved by the planning commission, it would be managed by staff, but it's not codified in the municipal code. So if we need to tweak that guideline a little bit, it's... So if we need to tweak that guideline a little bit, it's much easier to do that outside of having to re-adopt the ordinance and go through the whole ordinance adoption process. So that's the basic changes that we're proposing. The ordinance is in front of you. This is the first reading. So if you have any other questions for myself or Scott?
First of all, I want to thank the planning commission. This was a lot of work.
Yeah.
It really was. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel, do you have comments?
No.
And does the community have any comments?
This is a public hearing. So you should open the public hearing.
Okay, I thought I said, then all of a sudden I couldn't see it. Like to open the public hearing? Any comments from the community? Hearing none. Hearing is closed. Counsel, motion? Make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings?
I'll make a motion to introduce and waive all further readings of the ordinance of the City of Avalon amending Title IX, Chapters 11 and 17 of the municipal code, affordable housing pertaining to inclusionary housing requirements.
I'll second it. Okay. Raise your hand if you agree. Okay. Thank you.
Can we do number 14 first and come back to number 13?
I was gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
So that's perfect.
Go into number 14?
Yes, please.
Okay. Michael, you're up again. Taking it out of order.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Mike Palmer, Assistant City Manager. The item before you is the renegotiated agreement, an extension for Montrose. It's a five-year contract agreement for the operations management, maintenance, and monitoring of the wastewater treatment system. Back in July of 2002, or 2012, excuse me, the City of Avalon entered into an initial five-year agreement with Montrose. Then they were known as Environment Strategies, were Environment Strategy Consultants, Inc. They've gone through several different naming changes. They were recently bought out during that five-year period and are now known as Montrose Water and Sustainability Services. So we entered into that original agreement back in July of 2012, and the management of that wastewater treatment system includes the plant, the collection system, and the saltwater distribution system. The contract was amended in mid-2016, and then it expired in June 30th of this year. Since June, we had started entering into negotiations, and because negotiations took a little bit longer than we were hoping for, we ended up extending out that contract. But now we finally have a proposal before you here today. So this newly negotiated agreement represents an approximate 17% increase over the previous contract. However, there are some substantial cost-saving measures that will provide savings in the long term. And I'm just going to go through a couple of the highlights on what was renegotiated as part of that contract, because there are some substantial changes in there. One of the biggest changes in there is a built-in annual 1,000 hours of pre-negotiated overtime that's included in here. So rather than not paying for overtime period, which, you know, really hurts the company, worked great for the city, it was kind of hard to let that continue to go for another five years. What we did is we worked out a deal where we had a pre-negotiated and 1,000 hours of overtime on an annual basis. Anything over that 1,000 hours is, will be charged at a pre-negotiated rate of $127.50 per hour regardless of title and salary. So if you're a management plant supervisor or you're a part-time maintenance worker working overtime, your billing rate would be the same for overtime. So in the long run, it actually saves us money. We also added, as part of that 17% increase, we added an additional part-time operations and maintenance specialists to provide additional staffing assistance and also to increase quicker response times. This person comes with a vast experience of electrical knowledge, and so they'll be a huge addition to the team. They're already here on the island. They've been working at Montrose's cost for a while, but we wanted to fold them into the contract. We also have greater accountability of minor, major, and emergency maintenance responsibilities. So basically what this did was clarified roles, responsibilities, and response between city staff and Montrose staff. We had a 5% reduction in the cost of markup of equipment, materials, and supplies. Originally, we were charging 15% markup. Now we renegotiated that down to 10%, which is more in line with industry standards. So any public works, construction projects, and whatnot, they're usually capped at a 10%. There's also a prohibition on labor or staffing markup. So you can't markup 10% or 15% or any percent up on any labor costs, which is great. We did eliminate the shared energy cost savings clause on there. It had never been enforced, and we didn't feel it was necessary, but we are slowly making capital improvements to the wastewater treatment system, such as the Pebble Beach Lift Station that's ultimately going to reduce the energy consumption of the entire wastewater treatment system. So in the long run, that's going to save us hundreds of thousands of dollars in energy costs. And then what we did was we, because part of what's hard with contracts, there's sometimes, if you don't have these things spelt out, it's hard to plan for where you're going in the future. And we want to make sure that we knew exactly where the cost increases were going to come. So they will get a fixed 3% annual increase, which is just limited to the annual operations fee. So their base compensation is $1,420,000. The base compensation fee of that is just a piece of that, it's not the full total. So it's a 3% increase, and it's annual for the life of the contract. The only thing I would like to highlight is at the end of this contract, we will be required to go back out to bid. So starting in about 2023, this contract will expire in 2024, we'll have to go back out to RFP and go back out to bid and solicit for proposals. In the interim, we've already started working and having conversations with a couple of different companies who can help assess and do audits of our system to make sure that what we're doing from an operational and maintenance standpoint is best practice standards so that we can build in some of those findings and some of the gaps in that study, and we can build that into the RFP so that we can continue to make this as efficient as possible. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
I have a question. Things like their vehicles, are they, are vehicles included in their contract?
The vehicles that they have, they're responsible for. The vehicles that we have, we are responsible for.
So if they needed a replacement of a vehicle, that's on them?
That's on them. But if it's like the Vactor truck the city owns, so if the Vactor truck breaks down, we're responsible for that.
But like a pickup truck?
Right. They would be responsible for their own vehicle.
Okay. And just kind of curious, when you talk about scope of service and, no, what was the one? About discharge resulting and unauthorized release discharge. Typically, because you added language to, typically if there's unauthorized release or discharge resulting in proceeds, typically is all of that falling back on the city? It's typically our problem?
You're talking about the indemnity clauses?
Yes.
So we did change the indemnity provision. So they wanted to limit, which, you know, they're a business, and we understand, they want to limit their financial liability to the greater of either the contract amount or the insurance, whichever one was greater. And so what the city agreed to in looking at that was excluding from that limitation, from the indemnity limitation, any damage that was a result of what they call willful, reckless, or intentional actions by Montrose. Which would basically mean if Montrose recklessly fell asleep and forgot to respond to an emergency alarm, and there's an active spill that causes a bunch of damage or fire or something like that, and they were shown to have acted recklessly, then their liability is not limited at all. However, if there's something that happens and they did everything in their power that was deemed reasonable, and reasonable, Scott can give you a better definition, but reasonable is an accepted legal term, then it happened within their contract terms, but there was still something that happens, then their liability would be limited by their insurance. But in that case, the city's insurance, and we got confirmation on this from Ken Ong, who is our contact at Parsac, which is the city's JPIA, the city's insurance would kick in. So there was, there's in no way will the city be limited in the amount that they can go after for insurance. It's just where does our insurance kick in versus where does their insurance kick in? And part of that, too, was why would we, and their case for this is why would we, why would they want to indemnify if they're doing everything reasonable, but sometimes things just happen, and it's beyond their control? Why would we hold them, hold them responsible, basically?
And their insurance is $15 million.
Yeah, we restructured their entire insurance clause. That is what took a lot longer. We wanted to make sure that this was not a per, we wanted to make sure it was per occurrence and that we can continue to make insurance claims, that it wasn't like an aggregate. So we were very well protected on their side and on our side. And we have, we're requiring them to have pollution liability insurance, and the city actually has pollution liability insurance of our own through Parsac.
Great. Comments? Actions?
I'll make a motion to authorize the city manager to execute a five-year extended agreement with Montrose Water and Sustainability Services Incorporated and the City of Avalon ending on December 15, 2024, for the operation, management, maintenance, and monitoring of the City of Avalon wastewater system. Second.
Motion and second. Raise your hand.
All eyes.
Okay.
Okay, back to item number 13.
Yes.
Which is, thank you. It's regarding the cruise ship. So I just want to take us through some past stuff first, and then I have a short little presentation to do, and then hopefully guide you through some questions to answer. So just as a reminder, as our staff report, my staff report, there was a lot of attachments, and I reflected back on October 1st when we came to city council with this, and that was just outlining what the harbor master's authority is and the decision process involved at that time. It also talked about the marketing incentive, which is in our municipal code, and the economic impact was touched upon in that staff report. And then at the end of that was the city council asked the community to provide some guidelines to city staff so we could get their input on what they would like to see. And which I did attach all of those responses in the staff report. And then today, in the staff report for December 17th, all those, as I said, those responses were attached to it. There's also outlined that there was a survey that was done online by a resident and what those responses were that we were able to access. Staff reached out, I myself reached out to five individuals that had come to a few of the city council members and voiced their concerns about the cruise ships. So I thought it was best to reach out to them directly, and we had two separate meetings. And I just wanted to be able to find out what their main concerns were and get all their input, and then to help formulate our guidelines to the city council. I wanted noted that there are two ports that are similar to us but not identical because we are a destination port and we're not a port of entry, we are, yeah, a destination port.
Right.
I did receive an email from one of the members of that group that I met with, and they just commented that on page two of my staff report where I reflected that Avalon is receiving a $5, I haven't noted that there's a $5 warfage rate. I was just trying to reflect that that is our end thing in July 1st of 2021. So right now, it is only $4, and this July will move up to $4.50, and then in July 1st of 2021, it will be at that $5 rate. I was just trying to reflect, because that is our end goal at the $5, and that's what's in our municipal code currently. And also in that email, they wanted, they noted that there should be some additional information to you as far as like the hospital measure that I'm assuming is still going forward and being on the ballot in next November. But since I don't have that ballot in my hands as a city clerk's office, I can't tell you what they're requesting, so I can't provide that information to you. The other thing that was mentioned was about environmental factors that the cruise ship does, whether it's to our infrastructure, the wastewater treatment plant, the landfill, how much water cruise ship people are utilizing when they're in port, and any other of our infrastructure.
Could I just clarify that comment about the warfage rate? That the warfage rate at $4 right now is for the current cruise ships coming in, but any other cruise ship that would come in would pay the $5?
No.
Anybody who comes in right now?
All cruise ships right now, it's $4.
Okay.
And our municipal code allows for us every year up to the five years, which ends in 2021, it will be up to the $5.
Okay.
So we started at $2.50.
So if I, if I want to come right now in summer of next year, it's only the $4.50?
Correct.
But if I'm negotiating to come in 2021, it will be the $5?
Correct.
Okay. All right. You try.
Discuss and provide directions, so.
Yeah, there we go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a quick little historical thing on the cruise ships. Let me get, so I can see better here with my glasses. There's been a lot of talk about, are we going to have two cruise ships in the port at one time? And, you know, our cruise ships all started back in the 80s. I do have an expert in the audience, and that's David Crete, if you had specific questions on the history of cruise ships. So two vessels have visited Avalon Harbor on the same day five times since 2014, and those dates are listed right there. The last three, from September 25th in 2018, and then the two in 2019, that's when one of the small GO ships came into town at the same time, which, you know, they have the 100, around 100 passengers. And then we have had two cruise ships with visitation on the 4th of July, and that was in 2017 and 2018, and it shows the number of passengers that were on the ship at that time.
And those were midweek, I believe.
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, both.
Right.
Yeah. But yes, it definitely impacted the city on the 4th of July. As we touched upon on October 1st meeting, that the cruise ship approval process is part of our municipal code, as well as the federal offshore anchorage, anchorage policy, which I did provide in the staff report, and that gives the harbor master the authority. The harbor master must coordinate all vessel traffic, which includes recreational, cross-channel carriers, the cruise ships, shoreboats, commercial vessels, et cetera, as well as that, so he assesses the security and safety risk and considers all things before he makes that decision. This is currently what's happening. And it is, as stated in the federal offshore anchorage, that is on a first-come, first-served.
And you know, that was really interesting. I had never seen this before. And it was done in 2015. I don't know how that got generated, and is there something that we should do to kind of?
That's the most updated one that is online. And then I know that the harbor master in 2018 or 17, he had also provided an update as far as the businesses to give them, and we haven't received that formal guideline yet because some of the stuff in here, in that guidelines, like the business might not exist anymore.
Exactly, that's what I noticed as well. Yes, yeah.
Okay. And then I just wanted to clarify something that happened at our August 6, 2019 city council meeting. So a resident from, I'm sorry, everybody. You got to remind me if I haven't. I'm not used to a PowerPoint, so you have to remind me to change the page. A resident had come to the dais during oral communication and regarding a rumor that they had heard about a new cruise ship. The harbor master confirmed at that meeting that there had been some preliminary emails, but nothing had been formally confirmed. And the numbers after each of those lines is exactly where it is in the digital recording, so the audience wanted to go check on that. The mayor asked if that decision should come before the city council. The city attorney confirmed that the city council only deals with the issues of the warfage. And that's per those other policies that I had reflected earlier. And then Mayor Marshall asked for the harbor master to keep the city council informed. And then the vessels' visits were confirmed at a September 3, 2019 meeting. So I just wanted to clarify because I've heard other things that might have been said at that meeting and what we might have promised, so if it's, anyway, I just thought that was important to note.
Thank you.
The future cruise ship schedule. We have Carnival Cruise Line scheduled, and that is pretty much set through 2025. They've given us their dates. So it's weekly on Mondays and Tuesdays. In 2022, 4th of July does fall on a Monday, and I wanted to make sure that was noted. And in 2023, the And in twenty twenty-three, the Fourth of July falls on a Tuesday. In twenty twenty-one, an additional Carnival vessel is scheduled for one Saturday in January, February, March, an additional, um, two Saturdays in the month of April. Voyager of the Sea, the Royal Caribbean Cruise Line is scheduled in twenty twenty-one and that's on Wednesdays starting July first of twenty twenty-one and that will be July, August, and September. And, uh, it tells you the approximate passenger count, which is three thousand one hundred thirty-eight passengers. Voyager of the Sea, uh, Royal Caribbean, again, is scheduled in twenty twenty-two, Wednesdays again, but starting in June, uh, through October fifth.
When did that one pop up?
We, that was noted, um, Mayor Marshall at that first meeting in, um, September. And then the dark, uh, Disney Cruise Line is scheduled to come just twice in twenty twenty-one and that's, uh, Wednesday, March seventeenth and Thursday, March twenty-fifth. And no scheduled visits for the year twenty twenty-two at this time.
I'm sorry, I, okay.
Same both different years.
Yes, that's what I, I'm sorry, that's what I was missing.
And as stated, uh, Avalon is a cruise destination. In the state of California, there are only seven cruise ship ports. Avalon, Long Beach, Los Angeles, Monterey, Santa Barbara, San Diego, and San Francisco. And of those destinations, Avalon is the only port visited consistently as a destination. It's not a part, uh, port of origin or a repositioning port. Monterey and Santa Barbara, and I gave you some facts in the staff report of what they charge and what they offer are the close comparable ports like us. Because they do not have a berthing facility.
Mm-hmm.
And they use tenders. Uh, this page just shows you the type of revenues collected by the city. We have estimated in our budget this year that we would receive approximately seven hundred ninety thousand to the city. Uh, and also there is the additional sales tax that's generated when they're in port, the admissions tax, and that's for many land-based tours, harbor use fees. And so the total contribution, this is just an estimate, would be one million eighty-five thousand dollars. As well as the island economy has been estimated at seventeen point four million and the note at the bottom reflects where that number has come from. Um, another important thing that we reflected in the October first meeting was that the warfage accounts for approximately ten percent of the harbor's fund for operating. There's been a lot of talk about the warfage and marketing incentive that is, uh, stated here in our Avalon Municipal Code, section ten dash two point four oh two, B six. And it is, uh, based on a hundred percent of the manifest, um, are the warfage that we receive and the incentive is if you call on the port of Avalon fifty or more times a year, there's an incentive of fifty percent of the warfage fees collected on that second ship is given back. Um, at this time, only Carnival Cruise Line qualifies for this incentive and, uh, it is not exclusive just to Carnival. So if Royal Caribbean started coming fifty more times a year with their second ship, then they would be entitled to it to, per the municipal code right now as it states.
Can I ask you a quick question, just so I don't lose my train of thought? How many actual residences do we have in town?
How many what?
How many residences? Parcels?
Oh, boy. I'd have to ask.
Like a, like a rough estimate, like eight hundred, maybe?
Two thousand.
Amanda?
A thousand?
Two thousand.
Oh, two thousand? Okay. Thank you.
Uh, the warfage revenue, ship visitation has been relatively stable since two thousand fifteen and over the last three years, only, uh, three ship annual feriances has a, has occurred. So in sixteen seventeen, we had a hundred and fifteen ships that came into port. Um, the number of passengers was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand five hundred and seven and that was at a warfage of two fifty. And it gives you our, our gross revenue and then the incentive pay that was paid out. And it shows you our net revenue. And so as you go down in fiscal year nineteen twenty, it's just our estimate so far.
Mm-hmm.
Or projected. I will say that when, um, I met with the, with our group, the two times that I thought they were very helpful meetings, um, we came to some understanding and I thought it was, it, it guided me through our process. So I'm hoping, uh, counsel by giving you some questions, simple ones at first, we, we could come up with a guideline that could be very simple or it could be very detailed. And I would fear then if we got too detailed that we wouldn't be able to come up with every scenario that would cover it. I know that so far, you know, this has been working since the eighties. Do I think that we should have some guidelines? Yes, and I, because we're listening to the residents and I don't think anyone at this dais, dais wants a, a cruise ship seven days a week. Um, I do think though that we need to ha- have cruise ships come into port and I will say that that group was not against all cruise ships. So I, I do want that noted because I think there are rumors out there that there's people that don't want any cruise ships. They just don't want to see overabundance of them, you know, five days a week even. Um, so.
Mm-hmm.
So I guess one of my first questions is, do you want to establish further guidelines or allow the harbor master to continue, continue to exercise sound judgment on granting the vessels? That would be my first question to you.
Well, give us a peek at number two. Because, because.
Is he?
Oh, there was, oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, do you wish to further limit the number of cruise ship vessels allowed in Avalon Harbor at one time?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's under your folder.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Do you want guidelines, yes or no? I guess that would be my first question to you.
Should we hear from the audience?
Yeah, because I guess there's that other thing of, of, I know there's still a push by some to have some kind of an advisory measure. But again, I find that quite difficult based on all the variations and that kind of thing, you know? Four cruise ships, three cruise ships, number of passengers, that, you know, I mean, it's, it would just, that's not typically an advisory measure, that's just, and then compiling all that just seems kind of insane. So.
And in this, this, today's staff report on page three, I did outline three different options for the council.
Yes, you did.
But I was trying to get through just some simple questions first, um, so I go.
Yeah. And, oh, well, and I think Steve, you're in the right direction, well, unless we want to talk about it first. Developing guidelines to be adopted by a resolution, I don't know that guidelines have to be adopted by a resolution. It could just be kind of a policy thing of what we think. So I don't know if a resolution is absolutely necessary.
Good point, Mara, and thank you, I meant to bring that up. So if you, if you directed staff with guidelines, they don't have to be adopted by a resolution because what you direct, the policy you make, we have to follow.
Right.
Yes, a resolution would formalize it.
Right. And then if we want to make a change, we have to go back and.
Yes, and one of my things was to annually or every two years to review those policies to see if they're still working for, for the community.
Right.
I thought it would be a good idea that it automatically go, just like we have timeframes for everything, like, uh, say the first of May every year, or every other year. So during an election year, that the conversation would come back on the first meeting in May aft- after an election to let any newly seated council just talk about any changes or upgrades that they, that they would want to make. But I don't know that unless there was something that came up that was a problem, if you've, if you've got a council seated for two years, it doesn't necessarily make sense to, to bring it forward unless there's a problem.
However, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but I don't know with the work of either the chamber or whatever and they go out there or somebody contacts the city and says they want to come in, I don't think we can say, and they do that a couple of years in advance, but I don't know that, I don't think you can say that's the timing because you never know when somebody's going to come in tomorrow and say they want to do something and, but it's not for two years later and then you get, you receive the council and they go, well, yeah, we said, okay, but we really don't want that one coming. I don't know how we.
No, I, I'm just saying, bring the, just like we're doing right now today, just automatically have the conversation, how's it going, what's happening, what do we think? Do we want to talk about this? Do we want to talk about that? Like automatically have that conversation every two years, the first meeting in May. That's all I'm saying, so that we say to the community, this isn't just a one-time conversation we're going to have right now, this is something that's going to be ongoing every two years. We'll revisit, where are we? Do we, do we need to make any changes or whatnot? But I, I, I'll just say that, um, I don't know how it would even be feasible to take every single cruise ship visit out to the public. Like if, if the harbor master gets a, a phone call saying, hey, we've got one ship that wants to come in in March of twenty twenty-one, are we gonna, are we actually talking about taking that out to the public or having that be a conversation that city council gets involved in?
No.
Okay.
That is not. It's, it's providing the guideline, so if you said to the harbor master, we only want four ships, um, a week, up to four ships a week during our off-season, we don't want any more during our on-season and no cruise ships absolutely dinner on, on the weekends on our, on-season. Weekend cruise ships might be okay, November through February, some, when, I, I am not recommending, sorry, I am not recommending that council make a determination on every cruise ship that comes in. I would be calling you for special meetings all the time. I don't feel like the group that I met with that that was our final thing that council should have, it should come to the council meeting every time a cruise ship makes a request.
I think with, with what we have proposed for twenty twenty-one and twenty-two with the Disney and whatever, I'm thinking people want to see how that's going to play out. If those are done deals, let's say.
They are.
Because, they, okay, I think people want to see what's going to happen with that. But in the interim, if something else came along tomorrow or in a year, then the harbor master says and we, you know, yeah, there's room, but I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't know how we measure the impact of what we've already got on board before. Maybe something shows up later and then we, and then harbor master says, and all due respect, that, oh, yeah, but, but, you know, they, they have the right to anchor out there and there's room for them to come in, there's times for them, the tenders to come, but whether it be their tenders or, or what we use or their own, then what do we do? And, and then are we going to be back here saying, oh, now, now we've approved another one and we haven't seen what this one's, these are going to do yet?
So is, is, is your point, Mara?
I don't know what I'm saying.
That if, say it worked out okay, then we've already, if we made guidelines now that we couldn't have any more ships during our busy season, but yet it works out well, I, I'm not sure what your.
Well, I don't know either. So right now, okay, so right now we're saying that one's going to come in on Wednesdays in the summer?
Yes.
Okay. Well, and then somebody goes, well, I want to bring one in on Thursday in the summer. But how do we measure the concerns that the, some of the folks have about that summer vessel?
I think that your guidelines today could be, we do not want any more cruise ships during the summer season.
Until?
Period. And we can revisit it after that first season of them coming in on a Wednesday.
Yeah, but then you're thinking it takes the cruise ships two years to get it together to go and to do all their advertising and all of that, so that then delays it another, whatever, if in fact there was no, no impact. I'm not saying there's not going to be, but, go ahead, JJ.
Guidelines. Guidelines are guidelines and I think from what I'm getting here that we're just asking, um, what, what guidelines do you do? You, it sounds pretty obvious, you don't want five cruise ships a week.
Right.
Okay, I mean, I'm going to go on that limb, you don't want five a week. It sounds like three is what we're looking at max and that's in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, cruise ship companies will come, you know, they go twenty-four, twenty-five when they start, um, uh, doing their runs. So the guidelines are, we don't get more than three, um, in the wintertime, uh, or, or summer, whatever, however one works out to be, more than three, uh, cruise ships a, a week. They call and ask, hey, and we've done this before, we've, we've said they want to come, um, I think it was RCL wanted to come in on a weekend, absolutely not. Nope, sorry, can't do it, not, and then, and they, they, okay, and they make other arrangements. So they're planning two and three years ahead. So any guidelines we set up, we can make sure that we can, uh, and see, and see how they work. It's the one with Disney, we'll s- see how it works because, you know, it, um, we don't know. We're, we've got a, a pretty good system set up at this time on Mondays and Tuesdays and maybe a, maybe a, uh, Wednesday. And, um, and maybe some of the townspeople think that's too much. I, you know, I don't, I don't even want to get into that argument, that's, you know, I respect their feelings and, and I, and I get it, but, um, it's just basic guidelines. It, uh, we don't want five cruise ships, we don't want them on weekends and we don't want, you know, so.
Right.
But again, we're talking three years down the road.
Right, right.
So.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that.
I don't know if I confuse things or.
Yeah. Well, and then the other thing is, and, you know, this isn't directed at you, but so, so we say, okay, the, the water can take it, everything can take it, but then, now you're talking about the streets of Avalon. And what are those kinds of limits we might want to, I mean, we raise, we, you know, we, we raise the money that I, to me, I think takes care of the infrastructure, fine, I mean, if somebody asks about trash, well, we've got somebody who does the trash, so that's just a given, it's not going to, that rate's not going to be increased. But in terms of where I see a bottleneck is when people get off the ship and you have three thousand people already, it's kind of crowded the way that whole area is configured down there. So, I mean, so when somebody says, oh, we can have five thousand people a day come in off of their, I mean, to me, that seems really high because there, there's a bottleneck. Um, but, so I think there should be a discussion about the number of passengers in a day.
I think we, we have had some conversations about not having, say, two Carnival populated ships or that, that type of population, but to have a Carnival populated ship and to have, say, a Nat Geo ship in the same day is, uh, you know, not impactful.
That's about under four thousand people.
Well, Nat Geo's like one to two hundred.
Yeah, and so if the other ones were thirty-eight, whatever the most was at one point, was thirty-eight, I mean, they're, yeah, something less than four thousand people.
Well, I think Denise did a really good job laying this out and so I'd just like to hear a few people's opinion, let's just come up with some guidelines and it, it's pretty self-explanatory, whatever the guidelines are, the harbor master will follow them and, and we'll see how they go. So maybe we should just hear a little bit from both sides and what is, you know, acceptable and what we can agree on. And I think it looks like we'll come up with something that's satisfactory to everybody. So, anybody wants to get up and tell us what they think the guidelines would be?
So how long are the David Thompson one, uh, one-ten chimes tower? So how long these contract, are we setting up a contract that lasts so many years? In other words, if, if a year from now we said, we don't want to do this anymore, could we tell the cruise ships, sorry?
First, Dave, we don't have any written type of contract with any of the cruise ships. Can we tell them that they can't come into port? Absolutely.
Okay.
But if we're committed to a certain year, then we would, we would have to say from this point on, we will not be accepting you into our anchorage.
But if we make a commitment to them, they could legally have some recourse with the city if we pulled out at the last minute, a month ahead of time and said, no, we don't want you to come in summer of next year?
I have no, I, if, I would think if they've already sold tickets for it, yes. Because I know they go out a couple of years.
Is that what we're hearing, Scott?
It would be, it would be whatever, um, whatever agreement we, we would strike with, whatever agreement the harbor master reaches, you know, to mitigate against it, we could have something in writing.
So we probably need to see these agreements.
We traditionally don't have agreements in writing with the cruise ship.
We do not.
There's, there's a concern for me, you know? So if we're talking about, well, let's try this out and see what happens, then there's got to be some, something that we understand as far as how to. then there's got to be some, something that we understand as far as how to pull off if we want to. And then the size of the cruise ships is probably something that has to be stipulated. It's got to be under a certain passenger manifest. And um the, you know, it seems like those two things, uh, you know, so so nothing is a done deal. And that's what you're telling me, Scott.
Well, if we don't have a contract with them, they can't sue us for not if we say no.
Yeah.
And what happens if they've sold tickets?
So as far as Royal Car- Royal Caribbean coming in 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 summertime on a Wednesday. See, that's that's one of the the problems right there that a lot of people have and it's like, we already, we're we're already dealing with it Monday and Tuesday. And a lot of people don't already like that. So why do we need to add another another cruise ship on a Wednesday in the summer? And then the other part of this is, we're actually getting only $3. If you're charging four bucks and you got for Carnival, you're actually getting only three per person because of that 50% rebate thing. So $3 per person is what the city is taking in.
That's only on the second ship.
On the second ship.
So what? It's the second ship all the time. It comes out to $3 per person. If you add up your property tax, your salt and sewer and trash, it comes out to $4.85 a day per resident, I mean, per household in Avalon. So Avalon's saying that it costs about five bucks a day for a person to be here. That's to live here, but still, it's it's connected. And that doesn't include the, I mean, LA County Police contract with them is, what, 2, 3 million? LA County?
It's it's not that much, I don't know.
It's pretty high.
I think it's 2 million.
So, I mean, and that's coming out of, you know, all these things need to be taken into factor.
One and a half.
Basically, $10 a person would not be too high for for these, to to really offset what the city is going, why does the city have to pay for this to happen and still take the brunt of the wear and tear, the increased trash, the pressure on the sewer system? And for what? For $3 a per person? I don't think that's legit. You know, it it costs you and I more than that per day to live here in in regard to the city fees and services. So, you know, that's that's where I'm coming from on that. And, you know, we got, if people want to come here and they appreciate being here, they have to help pay for it. It costs a lot of money to make this town look like it does. And I don't think that's happening. So that's my concern about that.
And your points are there. Lisa? I'm sorry, Rudy, and then you'll be next.
Lisa Lavelle, um, I just wanted to say with regards to the question about contracts, um, the cruise passengers are all told that the ports may change without notice. So with regards to that question of if we were to ever say, this is the end of it, it would be the end of it. They would do an additional day at sea or spend an extra day in a different city.
Thank you.
And so just so if people are asking. Um, and then with regards to Dave's questions, I um I am in support of having cruise ships here. I'm in support of making it reasonable for everyone as much as possible. Um, a lot of the decision-making feels like it's being based off of emotion or seeing something with your eyes and feeling overwhelmed with a number of people in a certain space or region or area. I'm wondering if there are some key performance indicators we can look at on cruise ship days versus not and on summer cruise ship days versus not of what the difference in trash intake, sewage intake, water usage, vehicle issues on the streets are. It makes sense to make those decisions off of fact-based information along with the emotional information. Um, so I don't know if that's something that's pullable currently, pullable at some point this year to be able to make better informed decisions. Um, but it may help, kind of help balance the feeling with the fact.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Good point. Thank you.
Well, I think those were some good good thoughts. I think what's happening here, we we've had a, years ago, there was a uh 2020 vision that was prepared, that kind of told us where we thought we should be going with the community over those years up until 2020. And and it just talked about the population and um and a lot of flowery words that really had to do with uh keeping the keeping the community in tune. But I guess what I'm saying here is that the, when you talk about guidelines, uh, we actually have some guidelines which were put into that 2020 vision. And in addition to that, uh, I think we have some of some of what was talked about here having to do with the condition of our infrastructure, sewage treatment plant. So there's there's a lot of uh things here. And I think that we're we're just kind of, when when they leave it open to the harbor master, you know, as to what to do in terms of the number of ships coming in, I think that's a it's a it's a city responsibility, planning commission, city council, and to make sure that all of our infrastructure and we can we can define which portions of that really make what what really needs to be done. I'm sure the public works director knows that. And and that will help decide how many how many ships or how many people we can really afford to be uh taken care of. One thing that I I see every time a ship comes in, uh, the city has a lot of ordinances. And one of them is vehicles. And uh, as an example, every time the cruise ship comes in, and many times it doesn't have to be just the cruise ships. If we have a holiday weekend, you'll see people standing in line, they'll stand in line for half the day uh just to rent a a cart. And our 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 streets are full of cars, a lot of them that really shouldn't even be here probably. But the 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 city has been very lax, I think, on their, uh, in terms of administering the vehicle control ordinances. And but those are the kind of things you see, uh, because those, and how many? How many permits are given to the golf cart owners? The the renters? Do they just have an open door for they can acquire as many as they want?
Are you talking about the golf cart rental businesses?
The golf cart rental businesses?
No, they're allowed just a certain number of permits and that has not changed. Other than the four methane ones that are going to be tried, is that correct, Denise?
That's correct.
And there's 120 or 140 max, whatever that number is, that has not changed.
And and that that's being monitors in some fashion?
Yeah, because they have to renew those permits every year.
Okay.
They have to bring the stickers up.
Good.
Yes.
But I I think that's an example of of what the 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 city, if you if if it is in fact being monitored, that's fine. But it doesn't cut down the numbers on the street that we see
Correct.
constantly.
Yeah, yeah.
And along with our local vehicles, which uh that's uh, it's nice to say we've got some control, but uh it's not there.
No, I
We see that changing every day. Anyhow, I am merely trying to go by your 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 questions up here. Need some guidelines? The city needs to set down more guidelines themselves within the community. Number one, all the infrastructure, uh, make sure that it's functioning in a fashion that can accept the number of visitors that you're you're inviting in.
Right.
And um anyhow, that's uh, I think that's where the the local impact or the impact on local community itself really is, numbers of people, numbers of vehicles on the street.
Exactly.
Uh, and uh, it's it's getting to a point where it's uh, it certainly doesn't beat that 2020 vision.
Right, yes, thank you, Rudy. You know, it is interesting though, in the report, that you talked about the 17-point-whatever-million dollars that comes into the community. And we can't lose sight of that when we have the working-class people paying exorbitant rents. And if we didn't have, I don't know what other kind of income source we could snap our fingers and would show up that would bring that kind of money to the community and to the working class. So I know it is difficult, but I I want to talk talk to Lisa's point just briefly because I thought that myself. Who would be or what would be the kind of agency that would could really look at those impacts? You know, I don't I don't I don't know who those folks are out there. They're probably out there that could really in this next year or two, as we're adding that ship on a Wednesday and as we're doing that. How do we, how can we really assess?
Well, I can go by our monthly reports that we get from the wastewater treatment plant. It shows the affluent, um, what's going through their system. Also, we get a monthly report from the landfill telling us how many things are bailed um and what's going across their scale.
We could look at Edison's water usage.
We would ask Edison, we we could ask, it's a matter of refining the data that we know we have to see if we can get it daily, because that's what you're really going to want is the daily information.
It's the daily.
Right.
And so and so we can get that and then you can look at again, as uh you said, look at it Tuesday when there's cruise ships and then a Wednesday when there's not a cruise ship in the summer.
And we'd look at money that, but you can't really look at the amount of money that comes into businesses on a daily basis, right? To know how much
No, but but like we do get a daily, um, we do get a daily report from Edison that that lists the demand, the water demand per day. And I mean, you know, I'm, it's just a given, a cruise ship visitor to the island is going to utilize far less water than an overnight guest. So, I mean, it is, you know, that that's less of an impact from a cruise ship guest.
Yeah, but I, but especially if we happen to go and spend $50,000 to have a study done and we could do a lot of that indoors inside, that would be wonderful.
I think it's nice.
You know?
And I think it would be valuable to get this information. I mean, right now, the conversation is about cruise ships and, you know, the it, I had mentioned it before, why are we calling out cruise ship guests only? So I think this information would be valuable um to look at from a year-round perspective and from a daily perspective as best we can year-round because we need to be, the the impacts are not necessarily just from the cruise ships. I mean, our
Cross-channel carriers.
The what?
Cross-channel carriers, they bring over more than 3,000 people oftentimes, right? How many do they, how much?
Right, but
How many people do they bring over in a day? Can they in the summertime?
Can they?
Uh-huh, or do they?
Four grand, maybe?
Oh, okay.
I just think it's important that while we're gathering our data, that we not just stick it on cruise ship visitors because we're we're impacted by all visitors. And I I think it's important to to see where all the impacts actually come from.
Do we want, okay, do we want to still play with guidelines before we have that kind of information? I mean, is, I don't know the urgency with the guidelines today, I guess, because because we've got something set up for the next two years, so I don't know what the do. I mean, there's a lot of work here that will stay here, this is wonderful, but I don't know, do we have to come up with guidelines today?
We were only listening to the community and that's why it's before you.
Well, I think it's, you know, the, we received a bunch of letters again today as well, um, which I know we had a couple that wanted to be read into the record. There, the the information, and I I just want to correct the the comment that was made, there there have been members of the community that have said they do not want a single cruise ship in town. There are other members of the community on the other side of the spectrum that have said that they that that they're fine with five. So the, you know, you might have two people that say that they don't want any in town. You might have two people that say that they want five and then there's, you know, a muddling of of the number in between. So it's, I mean, we've got to listen to the entire community. We've got to listen to all the data and we have a limited selection of that. We've got data from business owners, we've got datas from this group that has met. But we don't really have much data from the general populace. So I think that's valuable to go out and get.
And how do you suggest we get that?
I would be happy to put some thought into that. But I, you know, whether we sent out a, you know, paper survey that people could fill out, whether employers handed a paper survey to employees, but I, you know, I I know, I know because some have spoken to me that they're not on Facebook and bless them for not being on Facebook, but they're not on Facebook. And some of them, you know, have really strong feelings about, you know, having a job and having work. And then there's others that say, oh, it doesn't impact me at all. And I and I think that the the general populace is partly who we need to go after information from as well.
Judy Greer?
Thank you. Judy Greer, 355 Descanso Avenue. What I'm looking around the audience and not seeing are people who work all the time. And these are the people that are impacted if the cruise ships come in or not. I'm really surprised when people get off the cruise ship and the first thing they ask me is, where's a good place to eat? I mean, amazing, right? They just had a whole ship full of food. But really, they go to the restaurants, they go to the bars, they go to all the shops. And this is a reality, any shop owner will tell you that. And they seem to me to cause very little trouble because they get right back on the ship. A lot of them go back like at 2 o'clock. So it's the easiest kind of clientele I think you can have. And it is also an industry. Mr. Wrigley had the pottery industry. And now, of course, that pottery is worth a fortune, but that didn't last very long. But his vision was to have something here, sorry, where people could actually have a job that would sustain the island. So far, we basically have cruise ships. And I think when they're not here, it really shows. I understand the people who don't want them. I certainly agree and understand that it's an impact. But I think the city needs to take care of its infrastructure, whether there is a cruise ship or not. And that's a big thing they need to do. Um, and my feeling is, um, you can put some general parameters, like no more than 5,000 people, 4,000 people, you know, up on a cruise ship day, and that could be three little cruise ships or one big. We don't, we don't have to say that, we just have to say, that's the that's maximum. And maybe a maximum of no more than four a week. So if there's two in one day and none on the others, that's, you know, simple. But I I really feel that the whole business community that is not here, all of the waiters, all of the busboys, all of the hostesses and um people who work in all of the places, they are impacted instantly when there isn't a cruise ship. You go down and look today and all the people that were sent home without pay because the cruise ship didn't come in. And I think we have to think about them.
Thank you, Judy.
That's exactly what I was saying.
Since there's no one here, uh, good evening. Um, I would like to thank you for mentioning the difference between cruise ship passengers versus cross-channel passengers. Uh, if the cross-channel came to us and said, I can guarantee 1,500 to 2,500 just for the day, it's a charter, I think a lot of people would be very excited to see that. But for some reason, whenever it is coming from a cruise ship, uh, people throw their arms up. But people are people, whether they come off the cross-channel or whether they come off the cruise ship, they're spending the same money. It's worth the same amount in town, um, there's nothing different or there shouldn't be. And perfect example, today, the cruise ship canceled. We shut down. I mean, the weather was bad, we probably would have had to anyway, but the difference financially between a cruise ship day and even a middle-of-the-week day, even in the summertime, can be anywhere, you know, in the wintertime, it could be a difference of $2,000 to $3,000. In the summertime, it could be the difference between $8,000 to $10,000. And over time, that's a lot of money. And when business owners are paying four-plus dollars per square foot of rental and, you know, as it goes up over the years, we're paying that year-round. We're not paying it seasonally, so those that have We're not paying it seasonally, so those that have mentioned or suggested that we should just be a seasonal town, our rates don't fluctuate with the seasons. You know, to be honest, if we didn't have the cruise ships, we barely skate by to get through the first quarter of every year anyway. So, without the cruise ships, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. We stay open to make sure that our employees can pay their rent. That's, you know, the fact of the matter. Now, I understand with ships getting huge, huge, I just saw ones coming out close to six thousand in the next couple of years, I mean, that's insane, that's more than we have living here year-round. I mean, where do they go? You know, there's a lot of activities for them to do on the ship, sometimes not everyone is capable of getting off the ship because the tenders limit people getting off the ship, or they can't get off in a timely manner, so they just stay on. So, even though we might have a ship that comes in with twenty-one hundred passengers, maybe only a thousand get off. So, I agree that, you know, studies should be done if that's what you guys are looking for, but let's not spend dollars to make dimes, right? The other thing is, you know, if you guys want to look at businesses, and I'm not jabbing, I promise, I'm just stating facts, is you look at a company like The Island Company that has a business that has zero effect from the cruise ships, the theater, and no matter what you say, you are never going to make enough money during the summertime to sustain something year-round for a long period of time. It just doesn't work in this town.
Appreciate your comments, Haley. Misa?
Well, Misa's walking up, I just want to echo that, in, when I first moved to the island fifteen years ago, that was something that was very prevalent, was that the two cruise ships a week, first there was Royal Caribbean, then they left, and then Carnival brought in the second ship, and it was, you know, it was a given that save your pennies from the summer, because in the, in the winter months, thank goodness, you have two days of cruise ships, because you have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, that you, that we generally have visitors coming to the island, and then you have two extra days of cruise ships. So, that's a five-day work week for six months of the year that's desperately needed for those working in, in the general working class, I don't know how to say that properly.
Misa Bradley, one oh seven Pedley Beach Road. I thought Judy was very well spoken with what she said, and Haley. We are a tourism-based economy, that's what we are. You speak of fiscal responsibility, well, the number-one component is a steady revenue source. Without that, you can cut expenses all you want, but if you have no income, then you have nothing. If we don't have a steady revenue source, then we'll have to raise taxes to fund our fixed expenses, law enforcement, fire protection, infrastructure repairs, we'll be here whether we have another tourist get off a boat and come here or not. So, we have to figure out how to pay for these things. Cruise ships are an integral part of our revenue source, and less invasive than many, than many other sources. They're only here, like has been said, for five to six hours. Also, with Carnival now, we put all of our eggs in one basket, so it would be nice to have another cruise ship come, so if Carnival pulled out tomorrow, then we have nothing. So, if we have RCL and they like it, maybe Disney, we need to make this work for us.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Sandra Privat, Eucalyptus Gardens. My, I have so many concerns, but my biggest concern is the sewage. My entire life, I smell sewage the moment I arrive into Avalon from the Cabrillo Mall all the way out to Descanso. And we've been having two ships a year, two ships a week for all my years, and we're going to add more now. How are we going to fix this? We have, it's embarrassing to me. I'm not the only one who smells it, you all smell it, everyone in this audience, on television, we all experience it. It's, it's a concern for me, we're going to be bringing more people into this town without fixing that problem. I'm pretty sure we are at capacity. Every Monday, I see it being pumped out from our beaches in the morning, when people are coming into town, they get to see it. Am I, am I the only one who sees this or experiences this?
I just want to clarify, are you saying that sewage is being dumped?
I know, not at all.
That, I missed, completely misunderstanding what you're saying then.
I'm saying that we all smell it on every corner coming out of the streets, and it's being pumped out from like near the pier.
The vacuum trunk, the vacuum trunk is down there, I think that's what you're talking-
On Thursdays, they pump off the low-flow diverters.
On Thursdays.
Am I the only one? Everybody is experiencing this, right? Do you go to any other city and you experience this?
I'm not sure, I don't, Bob Green last seen there, I, because I don't know what, what that is you're talking about personally.
The low-flow diverters.
But only on, and they pump those out on Thursday?
Okay, then Thursdays.
Oh, okay.
I mean, it's embarrassing.
That's not a cruise ship day.
Oh, gosh.
I don't know, I don't know how that works. I have no idea how that works.
Okay, I'm just saying there's an overflow of it, there's too much, and we're bringing more people in. We have Monday and Tuesday, and now we're bringing in another one in.
Bob Greenlaw, could you come up and address this, please, because it's not sewage from our wastewater treatment plant?
Okay, on Thursdays, we go and clean the low flows, that's not pumping sewage there, it's the sediment that's in the bottom of the sumps there. And the low flows are what catch all of our drainage and then transport it to the sewer system so that it doesn't go into the harbor, so our drainage from the streets doesn't go in the harbor. So, there could be some sewer gases sometimes, so what we need to do is make sure that what we do once in a while is jet the sewer, so if there's any, anything kind of hanging around in, in some of the drainage there, we make sure that goes down. And we do that on a regular basis, so, otherwise, you know, I don't know of any other sewer gas is that you would smell on a regular basis with our maintenance. And if there is, residency need to let us know so that we can do those maintenance activities.
So, I'm wondering if that, if we bring in another ship, that that's going to get better, or is it just going to stay the same, is it going to get worse?
It's not going to get worse.
It's not going to get worse.
It's going to stay the same.
It's, it could get better.
It could get better bringing more people in.
Yeah, I don't think we're at capacity with our sewer down there, I don't think that would impact it.
Okay.
Is there any facts that actually state that?
Bob, whatever.
I'm just looking at the flows that go into the plant and especially the flows during wintertime, we are nowhere near capacity, so we could handle more sewage coming into the plant and in our system.
Sorry, did you say wintertime? But we are talking about bringing a ship on in summer, right?
Summertime, so, could be on a Wednesday that we're bringing another ship in, and it would be just the same as Monday, Tuesday in the summer.
But what about the other days? I mean, that is an extra impact, right?
Possibly when we're on the weekends, there could be, you know, additional people on the island and, and we could be hitting the higher-capacity flows, but on, on-
Are people capable of dealing with that?
On a Wednesday, we'd be totally capable of dealing with that.
Yeah, I don't understand that, because, I mean, every day, I'm downtown and I smell that, and I, isn't that a problem?
So, what I was expanding on before, and I think this will be my last comment on it, was that there could be some gases come from need to clean, you know, some, jet some sewers, and as you have more debris going down the storm drains, maybe on a more regular basis, maybe it's once a week, we need to jet the sewers, maybe, you know, so, but we need to-
We're, we're doing it once a week.
Okay.
So, what we're doing is we're pumping the low flows, but also sewer gases can come from debris coming down the storm drain, and so that catches some of the sewer gases.
Is there an alternative way we can deal with that? Because I smell it from Cabrillo all the way down to Descanso.
I don't know what you're smelling all the way to Descanso, if somebody can add to that. Lisa's saying, yes?
Yeah, I just, I mean, at this point, I think that I've answered the question, and otherwise, I'm not receiving any other complaints around town with this sort of-
And here comes Michael Palmer.
What we can do is we can go and investigate it and take a look and see if there is an issue or if it's collecting that, and we can take a look at our, an evaluation of what our policies and procedures are for maintenance of that, and then we can make some adjustments. So, we'd be more than happy to do that, and if you want to chat a little bit more offline, I'd be more than happy to talk to you about what our normal maintenance schedule is, we can go over some of those additional schedules, and we can also talk about capacity, because we do get average, we get monthly reports from Montrose who operates the sewer treatment plant, and we've got capacity details on there.
Okay, I'd love to hear from you in the future, but it's amazing to me that nobody is saying that they are hearing or smelling anything that I'm smelling on every street corner, every day for decades.
Okay.
But also, there's also the internet service, Monday and Tuesday, we all have a breakdown of internet services, hard in the first place for all of us to have internet out here.
Yeah.
And I'm also concerned about the, the trash as well, so.
Okay, great, and we're going to, we're going to, the internet service is another interesting thing, but we are going to get some statistics and work on that.
Okay.
Sandy, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. And who's that in the back? I'm sorry, my eyesight's bad.
Jerry Dunn.
Oh, okay.
Good evening. Jerry Dunn, one thirty-three Upper Terrace. I just, one comment that was made about the busboys and the servers that aren't represented here tonight, I can tell you, I'm representing those people, at least from my business, that were sent home today. Without a cruise ship, there wasn't the business, and so the first thing we do is start cutting people and sending them home. So, we've been working on trying to get these cruise ships here for at least twenty years, and the letter that I sent you represented our businesses and the city with Bud Smith and Joe Caliva and Dave, Dave Howell, we went to Florida twenty years ago trying to bring these cruise ships here, and now, finally, it's coming to fruition, and we need to take a look at it and see if we can accommodate those people. I mean, nobody's looking for five cruise ships a day, or two or three a day, anything like that, we're just trying to grow our business, and, and I think the infrastructure of Avalon, everything from, you know, the monies that you guys need to, to support the town and even all the way to the electrician or the plumber that we hired to do things because we have the monies from the cruise ship business that we can, you know, upgrade our businesses, but we really do need those ships, so hopefully, there can be some amicable agreement that can work out where we can get more of these ships in here and not saturate the town.
Right. Okay, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
Debbie?
Debbie Wright, two-ten Descanso.
I was going to comment, and Bernie and Sandy were going to comment, I'm going to have to go start commenting today.
Okay.
It's only three minutes, though.
So, it's three, six, nine, twelve. Okay.
Do you want, do you want, they're saying that she has nine minutes if you agree.
Twelve.
Twelve.
Oh, that's twelve, there's four of you?
That's three, you only have two minutes.
To me.
Can we do that, or could, or would it be nice just to hear four different voices?
There is no voice, is there a voice?
I mean, intonation.
Debbie's got several pages listed that she wants to read into the record, so let's, let's just keep moving.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, let's just keep moving.
Yeah, okay.
And they're allocating their time to her so she can read through her whole letter.
Okay.
Okay.
The one that was in the newspaper?
The what?
The one that was in the newspaper?
Some of it, and I, and not everyone has read the newspaper, very few people read it, so I'd like the people at home to be able to hear.
Great.
Okay, so Debbie Wright, two-ten Descanso. On the Avalon Chamber of Commerce website, it posts the Avalon Vision 2020, quote, Avalon exemplifies environmental awareness and stewardship. The community strives to use technologies, products, and practices that are energy-efficient, reduce pollution and waste, conserve water, and protect the environment of the island, the natural features, and open spaces of the town. The world, the world is at a precipice in regards to climate change. We are living in a time where our carbon footprints needs to be at a minimum, and our oceans need to be protected to ensure sustainability of our planet and the many forms of life inhabiting it. We are all responsible for the part we play in climate change. Most of us have or will have children and grandchildren. We should all care about the planet we are leaving them, that is our responsibility. America faces an epic choice, and the results will, the results will define our country for generations. Having owned a retail store Marina Del Rey for twenty years, I understand firsthand how important it is to get customers to come through your doors, I understand all of the expenses involved in running a business, and I understand what it means to employ people and supply jobs to people within the community. But I have to ask, is adding two more cruise ship lines during the summer a responsible solution when we already have almost ten thousand visitors a day without a, without a cruise ship? Same people say, if the cruise ships don't come here, they will go somewhere else. Where, to San Diego, to just another big city? Catalina has so much more to offer and the cruise ships know that. Responsible tourism is all about taking ownership of your actions. Only the operators of cruise ships themselves can make the changes necessary to reduce their environmental impact. However, the responsibility also belongs to the ports that continue to allow these floating polluters to continue. Shouldn't the city and the Chamber of Commerce be responsible in their choices and how they get tourists to come to the island? Shouldn't the community also have a say in how many cruise ships come to the island? At the October first city council meeting, Cindy said, quote, "The public would have input on what happens with the cruise ships, just like they do with every other decision the council makes." I would like to point out that the majority of the residents don't give their input because they are intimidated by, intimidated by the process and fear of retaliation. Regarding putting cruise ships on the ballot, unless it has changed since the October first meeting, there were more residents in the chamber survey that were against more cruise ships than there were residents for more cruise ships. Regarding Cindy's comment on October first about the community having input, I would like to point out, there is a vast difference between giving one's opinion and actually having a vote. We, I would also like to point out that there are a few people that I, that spoke at the meeting on October first that weren't giving accurate information. I would caution people to do their due diligence about their research before they speak. Both the city council and the audience listening should get, should get accurate information. I understand cruise ships will be coming to the island, but we should not be complicit in the damage they do to our environment by continuing to add more. I've heard several businesses in town, one being Jerry Dunn, Jerry Dunn recently, expressing that the island needs to get rid of Carnival and bring in cruise ships that actually spend money in town. Perhaps this is the time to get rid of Carnival and replace our ships with, with ones whose passengers will actually bring in more revenue to all of the businesses in town, therefore allowing the city to limit the number of cruise ships that come to the island while still bringing in the needed revenue. We have almost a ten thousand visitors a day on the island during the summer months, that in itself puts a strain on our already fragile infrastructure. During the heaviest part of the season, tourists often tell me they are not able to zip line due to the lack of availability, they can't get a seat at Descanso, they can't rent a golf cart due to availability, it's hard to be able to parasail, they can't get into a restaurant, et cetera. Why would you want to add to that by adding thirty-two hundred, perhaps thirty-eight hundred with crew, more people a day by adding more cruise ships? At the October first meeting, Leslie Warner got up and said, quote, "I hear it all the time when I teach yoga, I don't want, I don't want to come here on a Monday or Tuesday again, that's my experience, I hear it often." Is that what you want visitors staying on the other days where we're going to have additional cruise ships also? The, now that you have two more cruise ships that are coming at the height of our season, so those are more days of the week, our non-cruise ship tourists won't want to come back, so I ask you, why would you want to continue to lower the visitor experience for up to ten thousand visitors a day that come who are not on the cruise ship during the height of our season to be responsible if cruise ships are to be added? Shouldn't you be adding them during the slower seasons? I'd like to share some of the, some of the comments that were incorrect at the last city council meeting that some people made. Jim stated, quote, "All of the ships that call on us by virtue of being approved to operate in California must meet the standards of the California Air Resources Board." My response, in two thousand and six, the California Air Resources Board adopted the airborne toxic control measure, amendments limiting onboard incineration on cruise ships. This measure, effective November two thousand and seven, prohibits cruise ships from conducting onboard incineration within three nautical miles of the California coast. Is expected to reduce public exposure to admissions of toxic air contaminants for residents and workers living or working in poor communities and along the California coast. These amendments implement the requirements of the Senate Bill seven seventy-one. This does not take into account winds and tides. Jim also stated he attended two general sessions last spring stating, quote, "The cruise industry admitted that they were late to the table. Cruise lines are saying that they are now onboard, all their new ships are coming out, coming out are all LNG-fired, they are also looking into hybrid technologies." My response, the Cruise Lines International Association, which represents more than ninety-five percent of the industry, states on their website, quote, "Sixty-eight percent of its older ships have installed exhaust gas cleaning systems called EGCS, commonly known as scrubbers, which reduce sulfur and carbon emissions, and seventy-five percent of their new ships not relying on-" sulfur and carbon emissions, and 75% of their new ships not relying on liquefied natural gas, LNG, will have scrubbers installed." On its website, Cruise Lines International Association states the cruise industry is, quote, "At the forefront in developing responsible environmental practices and innovative technologies that lead in environmental stewardship, including scrubbers and LNG fuel. And that energy efficiency design standards will reduce CO2 emissions by 30% by 2025." My response. Using heavy, using heavy fuel with scrubbers comes with environmental risks like heavy fuel spillage, dirty scrubber waste, and other toxins, causing some countries to ban their use in coastal waters. Some of these, some of those few countries are Singapore, Malaysia, Belgium, Ireland, United Arab Emirates, and Panama, just to name a few. Norway is also currently working on banning them. Scrubbers allow companies to keep using cheaper bunker fuels. Cruise lines tell that they are on track to meet a new international fuel regulation designed to cut down on sulfur, but environmentalists claim the path that they have charted amounts to life support for one of the world's dirtiest fuels. Royal Caribbean announced a new class of ship that they will, quote, "be powered by liquefied natural gas and employ fuel cell technology, which the company claims will usher in a new era of environmentally friendly cruising." They state these ships are set to be delivered in 2022 and 2024, and their green technologies will help our steady progress on increasing energy efficiency and reduced emissions that will see us continue to raise the bar on our environmental stewardship now and in years to come. Royal Caribbean is speaking of LNG, which is liquefied natural gas. Liquefied natural gas is just another dirty fossil fuel. LNG is a natural gas primarily made of methane. The primary method is fracking. According to the United States Environmental Protection Agency, methane is a major contributor to the greenhouse effect, second only to carbon dioxide, and is about 21 times more powerful at warming the atmosphere than carbon dioxide. This comes directly from the EPA's website. This is important. Per the EPA, LNG, or liquefied natural gas, has no climate benefit for decades, if ever. Fifteen scientists from some of the leading institutions in the world, including Harvard, NOAA, and the Lawrence Berkeley National Lab, agree. In March of 2018, a body of physicians put out a report, quote, "There is no evidence that fracking can be, can be practiced in a manner that does not threaten human health." The group's found that fracking is poisoning our air, contaminating our water, and putting Americans' health at risk. Lisa said, quote, "Environmental impacts in California are improving. My question to Lisa is how? Because all of my research shows quite the opposite." My response. Legislation on the processing and dumping of waste barely regulates the activity of cruise ships, so tons of waste end up in the ocean waters having hardly been treated. It is also legal for the cruise industry to dump raw untreated sewage in the ocean once a ship is three miles from a US shore, and this includes California and Catalina. Studies conducted by the US Department of Defense and the US Environmental Protection Agency determine that, quote, "Graywater has a potential to cause adverse environmental effects." Alaska found that graywater can have higher levels of disease-causing bacteria than raw sewage. Cruise ships are not held to the same important environmental protection standards that apply to cities and industries that produce similar types of waste. A bill to amend the Federal Water Pollution Control Act to establish national standards for discharges from cruise ship vessels called the Clean Cruise Act was introduced to Congress in 2009. It was never enacted. It died in Congress in 2010 due to lobbyists. It was reintroduced to Congress in 2013, and again sadly, it was not enacted. No new laws have been enacted in the state of California to enforce the illegal dumping or the emissions since 2007. So cruise lines, so the cruise lines may be compliant to the old 2007 regulations, but the 2019, that is, but in 2019, that is simply unacceptable, not to mention there is little oversight to make sure they are complying. Now, my third comment about inaccurate information. The gentleman from the Groove Cruise got up and spoke at the October 1 city council member meeting cautioning the city about raising their fees. He said, quote, "Alaska is starting to change, is starting to charge too much, and almost all of the cruise lines pulled out of Alaska." My response. This is not true. According to the Cruise Lines International Association, Alaska directly from their website, the Alaska cruise industry continued to sail to new heights after a record-setting year in 2017. In 2018, cruise ships crossing the Gulf of Alaska increased by approximately 20% with projections of a 7% increase in total passengers to the state. In 2018, Alaska had an estimated 1.2 million passengers, and so far in 2019, they have reached an estimate 1.4 passengers. And I'm almost finished.
You're doing good.
Okay.
You've got 58 seconds.
Okay. Okay. And I've read these statistics to you. I, I've read these statistics to you. This is important stuff, and I think you have to take it into consideration. You've all got children. You've all got grandchildren, and we have to be concerned about the earth that we leave them. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna finish with this. I have read these statistics to you before, but I believe they bear repeating. A 3,000-passionate cruise ship generates the following amounts of waste on one typical week voyage. 1 million gallons of graywater from sinks, showers, laundries, and galleys. 210,000 gallons of sewage from toilets. 25,000 gallons of oily billage water. Over 100 gallons of hazardous or toxic waste, including chemicals from dry cleaning, paint solvents, et cetera. 50 tons of garbage and solid waste. Cruise ships view the ocean as their personal garbage bin. A medium-sized cruise ship burns 150 tons of fuel a day and is equal to the emissions of 1 million cars in a 24-hour period. How does that square with a city's 2020 vision? And this last thing. I want you to pay close attention to the actual years that I'm about to state to you. In what I'm about to read, per the Department of Justice, Princess Cruise Lines Limited was hit with a record-setting criminal penalty for deliberate pollution. The California-based cruise line, a subsidiary of Carnival Corporation, the largest cruise company in the world, pled guilty to felony charges for illegal dumping of oil and contaminated waste. In 2018, it paid a 40, in 2018, it paid a $40 million fine as part of a plea agreement. Carnival Corporation has been on criminal probation in the US for the last two years as part of its $40 million fine and plea agreement for illegally dumping oily waste in the ocean and obstruction of justice in 2017. In two, in April of 2019, this year, eight Carnival Corporation companies had violated its five-year probation by dumping wastewater and plastic into the ocean and polluting our air in excess of federal and state laws. In June of this year, 2019, Carnival Corporation paid an additional $20 million fine and again admitted guilt in a settlement with the US government. Here's a company that, that net in 2018, $3.5 billion. So these fines mean nothing to them, and that's who we're bringing in to this island. And that's what we're leaving, our kids.
Thank you.
Leslie Warner, 306 Whitley. Thank you for this opportunity to hear all of these opinions about cruise ships. Obviously, it's a very complicated issue with many levels, and just hearing about the environment, why would you ever want a cruise ship, period? But I understand. I am not against cruise ships, but I feel the city is selling themselves short. When you think about what you're charging, I hope that you will look into the future beyond 2021 and increase your wharfage fees and get rid of that incentive for the second ship. You need to get the money you deserve for this beautiful place for people to visit. And obviously, listening to Debbie's facts about how much money they're making, they can afford it. And that, that money is actually just going to come from the people who get on those ships.
Right.
So please arm yourselves with the facts that you need. You need to know about the sewer. You need to know about the trash. You need to know about the water. You need to know about the quality of experience that the other visitors on this island are having. And you need to set some guidelines for summertime cruise ship visitations, for off-season cruise ship visitations, how many people you will allow total in cruise ships in one day, and then move forward. And really, really think about it, because as JJ mentioned, they're looking at 2023. Are they going to be paying $5 then? Really? Come on. Be responsible. Take the time you need. Get the information you need. Reach out to the public. I understand that businesses rely on them, but five days a week will be way too much for this town. I guarantee you will ruin the charm of Avalon and all these people that love it for those moments when it's so peaceful and calm. Even in the summer without a cruise ship, they will not return, and you will be sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
Bryce Noel, 342 Eucalyptus. Uh, this is definitely a complex problem. Um, I've compared Catalina to Disneyland on several occasions, and in some sense, the city, when it comes to cruise ships, are effectively the gatekeepers for the cruise ship visitors that would come into that Disneyland. Uh, and this is the first time we're actually talking about closing the doors for any reason other than capacity, because the way that it's set up with the harbor as of right now, it is all dealing with can these people fit in town? Now we're talking about coming up with guidelines that if they are anything other than completely based upon facts, will end up being arbitrary. And if you're going to limit the number of people that are coming over, you are limiting businesses and employees' ability to make money. And from a money standpoint, and don't get me wrong, when it comes to things like the environment, that is extremely important. But as a millennial, and there's a couple of us in the audience, um, we have a very low chance of ever purchasing homes in general, but on the island, it's almost impossible. Um, I just got the numbers a couple minutes ago. Uh, the average home price in Avalon, um, based on Realtor information, is about $919,000. So when you talk about saying no to business that is coming in, uh, there needs to be a justified reason that is beyond, uh, any arbitrary concept. It needs to be based upon fact. Um, so I definitely agree. Cindy, I definitely agree that we should be having this conversation more than once a decade, especially since it's going to be a recurring problem. I think that every two years is a great idea. Uh, and I think that definitely getting all of the facts from, um, do we have a sewage issue? Bob says probably not. Uh, do we have a water issue? Probably not. Do we have a space issue? Probably. Do we have fire and sheriff issues? Probably. There are certain things that we definitely need to deal with and definitely need to, um, go with. The environmental issues are well-spoken and well-said. Um, but at the same time, you guys are facing a whole lot of issues that I stood up here defending the chambers TOT money a month ago, and now you guys are talking about putting limitations on your ability to make money, which is strange to me. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I didn't say my name earlier. Haley Sickler, 316 Sunny Lane. Um, I think the biggest question is, is the city of Avalon financially able to say no to cruise ships coming in right now? Do you have a solution to fill a gap financially?
I do.
Okay.
We, we could, I do, but I don't like that solution.
Oh, increasing the mooring fees? That worked really well a couple winters ago.
That, um, and, and you know, that was a shot.
I didn't mean it as a shot at you.
Okay.
I'm just saying, in general, I saw it earlier on there, about 60%. You, you could increase 60% mooring fees, or you could also, that's one of the options that's in your agenda item. So it's not a shot at you. It's actually what was stated on the agenda item.
I think that, um, you know, if we were, somebody had asked me, and that's why I asked the question of how many residents, somebody asked me before the meeting about, somebody in particular who does not want cruise ships at all. And we had this conversation about how would we make up the money. And for the $1,085, or $1,085,000 a year, I mean, certainly we could split that out right now amongst all the property owners, and that's about $8,700 a year that property owners could pay in order to make up the, the budget deficit that it would create if we didn't have any cruise ships at all. That's not a very positive solution in my eyes, but it is one.
Okay, except at the same time, that doesn't bring any revenue into the businesses. That just covers us.
It does. You're right.
That doesn't cover businesses and the people trying to work.
But, but I'm saying, it is a solution.
So take that $17 million, throw that $17 million on top of that $8,000, and now I'm paying a million, I don't know, $500,000?
I think, um, somebody who mentioned it at a prior council meeting was like, you know, $50,000 a year that everybody could pay into, to the city to offset the costs. It's not a positive solution.
Who has $50,000 a year without cruise ships to pay into the city? Who has $50,000 a year with cruise ships to pay into the city?
Yeah.
And a significant portion of our community doesn't even make $50,000 a year. So I, I think it's, that's why I'm saying it's not a positive solution.
No.
And I, I agree with the think globally, act locally, but the fact is, and this isn't meaning a job, this is just a generic, someone has a shoreboat service in town and brings in cruise ships to help subsidize the off-season so that they can provide a year-round vital service. And we've seen that cruise ship contract get taken away or be removed from that service, and that service starved and died. And that is a very small scale of what potentially could happen to the entire town of Avalon.
Yeah, I, I follow what you're saying. Exactly.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Well said.
Okay, so Cindy wants more input from the community.
Well, I-
Well, no, and so, and are we waiting to, to kind of, do we want to put something in advisory capacity in November 2020?
I would say let's hear Carl's comment, and then we can bring it back up to the council.
Yeah. So I only graduated from Avalon High School, so bear with me if I'm wrong on some of this stuff, but the government's job is not economic growth, is it? That's the business, investments, imports and exports, right? The, the government's job is infrastructure, entitlements, and military. An entitlement in this town would be housing. Military in this town would be police and fire. Infrastructure in this town, I'm hearing that businessmen in this town are concerned about their revenue. Well, that is their problem, not the city's problem. The city needs to cover infrastructure, entitlements, and military. If they're, if they're, if you're not covering those things, then I feel you're failing infrastructure by encouraging this. I also think when we were talking about, um, guidelines, I think no one is against a one-time ship coming over here and getting the approval from the harbor department based on capacity, but something where, me personally, I'm running for council in the next couple of months, and these cruise ships are already spoken for all the way through my full, my two-year term. So what can I technically do in the next two years to change any of this? Absolutely nothing, because it's already been set in stone. So I think the guidelines do need to be established, and I think you guys need to consider your responsibilities and your role, not the business's role. And we do have businessmen on, on the council that have a conflict. They are worried about their bottom lines. They're worried about their income, but that's not their job in this seat right here.
You know, I, I can hear that, and I've heard that, and I, I get it. However, if we said no cruise ships, how in, in the world are we going to get that? I mean, and I guess you could say that's a business's responsibility, but, but okay, if we have to bring over 3,000 more people in a day on Catalina Express, because I don't know how to say get there, and then we have to be concerned with, do they have wharfage times? Well, if you've got to bring over 10 more boats in a day to bring those other, other 3,000 people, they're not going to have a place to land. That's our responsibility. So I don't, pardon me.
Carl, the city is a business. We provide services. We need the funds to provide services. You know, if, our budget's like $28 million, and right now, cruise ships contribute to it, the harbor-
It's a lot smaller than I ever thought. It's a 1/17th of our entire income. That's a lot smaller than I thought. I think we-
That doesn't mean the taxes.
No, that's just, just the tax.
That's only part of it.
There's sales tax.
There's admission tax.
Let's all speak.
I know.
One at a time, and if you've already had your chance to talk.
Right.
You guys, you, you, I feel you are taking the responsibility of a businessman or investor or an import, export person in the GDP equation. You are not doing the job of the government office. I, that's, that's why I came up to, to speak, so.
Thank you. In the words of Pam Alberts.
It's a-
I will make it three minutes. My name is David Cre. Um, I've got a, I made a proposal for, for a suggested policy statement for the cruise lines for the council. I will-
Yeah, speaking of the microphone, and you have a very soft voice.
I will tell you that the, the Chamber of Commerce for the last 20 years- I will tell you that the Chamber of Commerce, for the last 20 years that I've been involved with this, has sort of set a maximum of 5,000 passengers a day that we have looked, tried to limit those ships that would exceed that amount. We're the ones that went to Carnival and Royal Caribbean and had them come on separate days. They used to come on the same day. So the Chamber is cognizant of the issue and concerned about the issue. On a personal level, I would like to say that I'm kind of offended that I was accused of lying to this council on the issue of the Alaska raising of their fees and not affecting their cruise ship's arrival. If the person who made that comment went back and did their research in 2009, they would find that the state of Alaska raised those rates to about $100 a passenger and the cruise ships stopped coming, some of them. So they had a decline in the arrival of ships during that period of time. If the city can, I would like to read this quickly. Whereas the city of Avalon receives cruise ship passengers at facilities it owns and operates, and whereas the cruise ships and cruise ship passengers respectively pay wharfage fees, taxes, and fees, cruise revenues, to the city of Avalon in a substantial amount annually, and whereas there are impacts of cruise passengers on the quality of life and enjoyment of Avalon by these visitors and the citizens of Avalon and its other visitors, it is hereby resolved that the city council adopt a policy regarding cruise ships. The policy, disembarking passengers at the city of Avalon facilities as follows. For the months of June, July, August, and September of any cruise, any year, cruise ships may only disembark passengers at facilities on Mondays, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Two, for the months of October through May of any year, cruise ships may disembark passengers at the facilities any day of the week. Three, on any day, no more than 5,000 passengers may be disembarked at the facilities regardless of the time of year or the number of cruise ships. Three, on one day, no more than 5,000, oh, I read, four, any variation from terms of paragraph 1 to 3 above shall be subject to city council approval upon application of the city manager. Five, the policy should remain in effect until such time as confirmed alternative revenues to replace cruise revenues are identified and implemented, at which time the policy shall be subject to review. So that's just a suggestion.
And you know what, and I believe Denise has that, I read that, and if, if and when we establish guidelines, I think that is one thing, again, I'm not for a resolution necessarily, and I thought there was some language in there that needed some tweaking, but that's to add to the pool, I think, of comments.
And I just wanted you all to know that the Chamber and its members are cognizant of the issue, have been careful about it for the last 20 years, and this is just a suggestion as a policy.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much, David. Okay. And we're going to try to wrap this up.
Ma'am, can I make a statement?
Yes, please.
I keep hearing it repeatedly, that we're not responsible for putting money into the business pockets. No, but we are responsible for the economic growth and well-being of our community. And if that, the businesses, yes, they get some money, but they also are employing hundreds of individuals in our town, and I think that that's, as the council is your policy, that's what you are trying to look out for, the well-being of our community.
Of the residents, I agree.
Okay, I just would like to answer two questions. First of all, I've not heard anybody in here, myself included tonight, that they didn't want to see one cruise ship come. I've not heard that, so I'm not sure where that came from. To you, if you were speaking to my comments about Alaska, I was referring to the gentleman who came here and spoke at the October 1st meeting, he was from the Groove Cruise. I was not, I was not referring to you, if that's what you meant. Yeah, I was not referring to you. I was pointing to someone else.
But again, I don't think that anyone is for getting rid of all the cruise ships. I mean, certainly, we recognize that the income, the revenue needs to come in. We just need to be more mindful about how we do it, and that's what my presentation was about, because you have a responsibility, yes, you have a responsibility to help the business owners, but you also have your other responsibilities, which is to everyone else who inhabits this earth. That was the point of my talk, and the information I was giving you, which was factual, responsible information. So I just, you know, again, I just wanted to comment about, someone had gotten up, and a couple of times I've heard, you know, some people don't want any cruise ships at all, and I just wanted to remind you, I've not heard that tonight.
Okay, you have not, and I've spoken it, because I have heard it, I have been spoken to as part of my job as a city council member, speaking with the constituents of this community.
I'm not talking about you.
But the point is, is you have heard it tonight, and I'm referencing those members of the community that have spoken to me directly, that would like their comments to be taken into consideration. So your group may not be against that, but there are some in town who are, and I think it's important to recognize them as well.
No, absolutely, I respect it. I mean, everybody needs to have their input, everybody needs to be heard.
And that, some of that is-
And some of that is in here.
Here as well.
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Okay.
I just have to say, I grew up here, I love this island, I just came off of a cruise-
Would you want to-
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I'm short. I grew up here, I, 111 Olive, Nancy Hodge, but I came off of a cruise ship last week, and the people that I was with had such an enormous respect for this island, they loved everything that was open, myself, I love coming in the winter to have things open, and I know the cruise ships make that, and like, someone made a point that it's not your responsibility to keep the businesses going, but it makes a big difference. And I think that if, that the town can manage the monies that come from the cruise ships to do things to keep the island and everything that are visitor services, like, where people are really impressed, when they come ashore, they go, oh my gosh, this is such a special place, and they see it immediately. And I think the really critical part is the monies that come from the cruise ships, because obviously, I don't know the dollar figures, but it sounds like a lot, that I think that the town needs to take that into consideration and make them become partners with them, instead of, you know, just, we want this, we want that. I don't speak well, and I really apologize, but I did come as a visitor last week through totally different eyes than growing up here and loving my island, but it was really fun to share it, and they just loved everything over here. And so, I would like to see, change happens, and we need to guide it, we need to not let it overwhelm what we have here and ruin our experience for the people that live here. But I just think that, you know, and I apologize, like I say, I'm not a good speaker, but I think that we need to make sure that the monies that they are going to pay, the town, are put into the right things to make it, when you first come in, you see a beautiful town, you don't see rusted-out docks, and you don't see, you know, streets that need some work. I mean, there's, there's a lot of bumps around here, and, you know, but anyway, thank you.
No, thank you, nice to see you. Welcome home.
Janie Hall, 334 Clarissa. Yes, Nancy, I can appreciate what she just said, because it's the 15th of December when the town really does absorb 2,500 visitors. I'm not so sure about the summer months, and especially three days a week. I think that there is going to be a wear and tear factor, just on our, the precious help that we have, where it's going to get, you know, pretty impatient, and those visitors are not going to come back. And the other problem that I see is that with all the talk about the city needing income, what the hell are we doing with this incentive? When Carnival makes $3.5 billion a year, why are we paying an incentive? I mean, that just doesn't make sense to me, and so it kind of ruins our argument about, we're really, we need the money, we need the money. And I don't know how you would get rid of the incentive, but I think, Steve, that was one of your objectives, was to bring them over, and maybe you can explain it better, but, you know, that, what other island are they going to go to?
I don't know if you need to respond to that, only if you want.
I know what she's talking about, too.
Oh, she was saying you were around on the council when they, when that incentive was developed at that cruise line, but I don't know if that's true.
It was, I think it was during a time that Steve was city manager, and I recall the conversation that came before the council was that Carnival only had one ship, and that they'd bring a second if they had this incentive, and so it resulted in a second ship coming.
Which is a council decision.
Decision.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. That's how it works, right? Yes.
There was, to go back to some comments made, a 2006 capacity study completed that I think might be worthwhile to dust off and revisit. I have a feeling a lot of the counts and usage are very similar to what we saw in 2005, 2006, and possibly even less than what would have been happening during that time, because the economy was doing fairly well until a couple of years after that. So that's one thing that might be helpful. Two, I would agree with Sandra on the sewage smells, and I'd be happy to point out the locations where that happens. I think it's just an issue of keeping the treatment going, so that's great. Three, there is a really great form anyone can use as a citizen of Avalon called a citizen complaint form. They're kept in City Hall. You can take one, you can make copies, which is what I've done, so I use them often enough. It's literally, you just put in what your concern is, and you turn it in, but it becomes an official paper that then the city can track and make sure that it gets followed up on. So a lot of people have been complaining on Facebook, complaining on Facebook, complaining on Facebook. That's great. Currently, the city does not monitor the Facebook pages, or your personal pages, or your timeline for complaints that need to be resolved. Please fill out a form. It can get tracked. If they don't know about it, they can't fix it. If they do know about it but don't realize the impact, they can't prioritize it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa, very good. Okay, so.
You want, do you want my, oh wait, I thought, didn't you give up your three minutes?
What's that?
Didn't you allot your three minutes?
Can I just ask, when we could see the statistics on the sewage flow? Is, when that's going to be compiled?
So really, okay, go ahead, Cindy.
Well, I was going to say that this is an unbelievably amazing amount of information that we've already compiled, but it's, for me, it's not enough. I would like to see the, I would like to look at this as a bigger picture and not just put this all on the cruise ship. So personally, I would like to see the information that we were talking about, the, Ernie, yes, the sewage numbers, the water numbers, the trash numbers, as best as we can possibly get those down to days, weeks, months, hopefully, hopefully more days than weeks or months, and look at that information. I'm interested to have a discussion about the incentive, although, I mean, I might be thinking of it in terms of 50% of zero is zero, but is 50% of a second ship worthwhile to the community? I think we really need to look at that as well, and absorb that information, and what the financial impacts would be if we, if we didn't have a second ship because we didn't have the incentive, or, you know, the pros and cons of all of that.
The other thing that goes with that is the, is that $5, when it's time to renegotiate, what is a real number? And I think a lot of people are saying that as well.
Right, and I think Leslie's point made, made sense to me, but also, I believe it was just four years ago, three years ago, that we had made that adjustment to go from what was $2.50 a head up to $5 a head over a period of time. So now that that has another two years, now probably is the time to look at, what do we want to look at every two years? And that, again, goes to my comment of, I wouldn't want this to just be a one-time or two council meeting conversation, I'd like to see a conversation that we revisit every, every two years, when, whenever there's a change on the council, or just every two years, so that somebody else who's coming and representing their members of the community can have a say in that as well. But I don't want to set guidelines tonight, because I don't feel like I have all the facts in order to make a solid decision. So I would respectfully request that the council add in whatever else they want to see, and then we gather that information and we come back to the table.
Gentlemen?
I would just first like to respond to Carl's comment, and come up here and say that because your perception that I have a couple of businesses that I'm a certain way is ridiculous. I, my children are fourth-generation residents, and I agree with a lot of things that the other side of the thing I said tonight, and I would look for solutions too. So I think the council is very split on, on what's going on. There is half of the room here tonight that represents a certain view, and another half that represents another view. And I would like to, I look for solutions. I would like to have a representative, two representatives from one view, as well as two representatives from another view, that are, been very involved with it, and meet with two council members, and talk about what is the most reasonable solution that we can come up with, that everybody can agree with.
I mean, if you want to do that, if you want to do that, fine, but that's what Denise was doing.
I understand, but we got a lot tonight, and I compliment you, you did a great job with that.
I think it's same shit, different day, pardon me, I mean, I mean, if you want to keep hashing it, but, I appreciate you wanting to do that, but I mean, I'm, the environmental part, I think, is in addition, but I think basically, we, again, if you all want to get up and do other groups, but I really think we've got a lot of great information already from all of these folks, along with the new information that we want, and maybe we wait till we get the new inform, I mean, again, Steve, we're all busy, and I know you're busy, but, or if somebody really has something wonderful to tell you, then they can just approach you, you know? I mean, we've been doing all these little advisory things, left and right, right and left.
Well, I'm sorry, and the other thing that you and I both said is more, more information, one of, one of the things that I think that we have missed is putting out information in Spanish. And I think there is a significant membership of this community that has not been able to voice their concerns because of the language barrier, so, would like to see, to see that as well, and however we do that, we can talk about opportunities or options, but, that's kind of-
Like Carl also graduated from Avalon High School, but a long, long, long time ago. In fact, there was like 1,600 people in town when I was going to school there. But there've been three big, four big events that have really changed the economy of Avalon over the last 50 years. I think the first one was the steamer stopping, because all of a sudden, we had a fairly good summer, and then we got the cabrio in the wintertime, which didn't do very good. Luckily, Catalina Cruises came along, which gave us year-round service, which helped, I worked in the hotel business, and it was the easy way to sell hotels, is that the steamer's not running, but there's two 700 passenger boats a day running. Well, they were running, they were doing good stuff. Didn't do us any good, because we couldn't go to the mainland and get back on the same day. Then the Express showed up, and the Express started off with a little 60 passenger boat, and now they're up to, you know, 1,400 total seats, just 1,500 total seats. Well, they really extended the season some, and in the 80s, the cruise ships showed up. And admittedly, initially, we had two cruise ships coming twice a week, and Saturdays were a zoo, and the Attorney General took Saturdays away from us because of the gambling thing. And that was probably a good thing for us, because I don't think we could use cruise ships on Saturdays. It was hard enough then. But now we're down to a point where we have a fairly plateaued counts coming in, they haven't grown, it's shrunk very much the last couple of years. Cruise ships bringing in about 25% of the people, the cross-channel bringing in about 75% of the people. I think we need to evaluate what these infrastructure needs and uses are. The water thing's easy, because this is a daily demand thing, and we just got to talk to the sewer plant and the trash people, find the other stuff. I'm just concerned that we don't get input from the whole community, and I think the fact that Spanish-speaking is missing is a critical thing here. You know, when I was working for the island company, I had a lot of Hispanics working for me, you know, in the housekeeping, and it's an unspoken for minority, because they just, they're out there doing the job, they're not here tonight because they're probably working. And so, you know, anybody knows anybody, get the word out.
So-
I'm sorry.
So, so, everybody knows what we're doing, right? Okay, so, in thinking about what might be happening tonight, I wrote a poem.
Oh, God.
It's eight days before Christmas in our wonderful city, the lights are all glowing, the town looking pretty. But tonight at the council, the community is busy, coming to take, talk about cruise ships in the city. No cruise ships, four cruise ships, the number unknown, an advisory measure, what will be shown? The council appreciates everyone's opinion, what is to become of our dominion? The solution will probably not come tonight, as the council deliberates what might be right. So go home this holiday, take a break from the fight, as we wish you a Merry Christmas and a happy good night. Okay, we have a closed session?
Well, I just want to summarize and make sure that I know when I'm coming back with.
Could we have an order in the audience? We're not quite finished with this topic yet.
I jumped again. Go on, Denise.
There's been too many times where you guys have a discussion, and then-
Could we have the audience quiet, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure we're summarizing properly, because there's been many times where council has a discussion up there, and then it's not summarized at the end. So, you have three things you want me to come back with? More information, not just cruise ship impact on the infrastructure, but as a whole, any visitor to the island, so, then discussion-
Well, which would have comparative dates on a Monday and Tuesday in the winter versus-
Versus what?
Summer.
Okay, and you want the weekend of the summer in there, too?
Yeah. Yeah, probably, because that's no cruise ships, but a lot of people, right?
I'm saying, if you can get the same daily data that we get, like water, then we could pull that and formulate it. Discussion on the incentive, the possible removal of that incentive, and then a possible increase of the warfage going forward, after it gets to the $5. Is that correct? Was there something else?
And also, how do we incorporate, how do we incorporate the Spanish-speaking members of our community to share their, do we put something out there in Spanish that folks could respond to? Do we, how do we?
Are there any, are there any, because it would just be a little hit, but are there any emails or people that there's a Hispanic, you know?
Database.
Yeah, or like our discussion pages, there are Catalina discussion page in Spanish? Do we even know if they have, if there's a communication there?
They can write in Spanish.
What's that?
They can write in Spanish on Facebook.
I know, but if they're typically looking at a gringo's Facebook-
They can also translate it.
You can translate it.
But then-
But through Facebook, they can translate it.
But then we have to get the word out. I'm just wondering if there is communication in Spanish already out there with members of the community? I imagine there is somehow, I guess that's just if you're asking a few questions.
Jim from the Chamber, if I could make a suggestion, not that we've been successful, but I have staff members who can translate, we have-
You guys in the audience, can you please give us the floor?
We've worked with the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we have an exchange membership with them, they've also provided translation services for us. The challenge is, we found our postcard for our survey, we did bilingual to every mailbox in town, I think two responses in Spanish have come through. So, it's a challenge that I haven't fully figured out how to get around, I'm all for it, I support the concept, but it's been a difficult road so far in my endeavors, and we have been really conscious, I believe, in what we've put out there, to be both Spanish and English as much as we can.
Well, we can all sit around and ask our Spanish-speaking friends how they do that, because there may be, you know, maybe a whole other group that's doing Facebook that's not Avalon Facebook or whatever, so.
Okay. Denise, was that all you had?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Great. Night, everyone.
Okay, we have one closed session, conference of real property negotiators, the Avalon Field Doc, city manager, and other parties, Rick Thornton, pricing terms of payment to be discussed.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, Tony.
Good night, thank you. And we are back from closed session.
No report of action.
Me and adjourn, Merry Christmas.